Okay, good morning, everyone. We'll open the meeting. This is a special meeting of the God County Budget Commission Wednesday, February 28th, 2024. It is 9:00 AM. No prior minutes, so we'll start into the 2024-2025 School District Budget Hearings. Berkshire Local School District is up first. Who do we have representing the school district?
Good morning. I'm Beth McCaffrey, Treasurer, Berkshire, Semi Right, Dr. John Stoddard, Superintendent, Jamie Berman's in the Treasurer's Office, Board President John Manfree, and Board Vice President Jody Miller.
Okay, thanks. Before we get into this, I guess I did a, I did a kind of a legal overview of PowerPoint yesterday, and I was told that I should do that for each of the hearings. Just gonna be boring. You're only supposed to do it twice. So, plus, I did it yesterday, and I don't think people grasped, grasped it.
I think people came in after, after the first session.
So, we'll quickly run through it again. This thing's working now?
Yeah.
Should be. Take a shot at it. Okay. So, what is our job? The Budget Commission shall ascertain that the following levies have been properly authorized, and if so authorized, shall approve them without modification. These levies are all levies in excess of the 10 mil limitation. So, when you look at 5705-341, when we are looking at the levies in excess of the 10 mil limitation, we are not to approve them unless such rate of taxation for the ensuing fiscal year is clearly required by a budget of the tax district or political subdivision. So, when we are, that is when we are assessing your need. Are you, the amount of money that you're bringing in on your levies, we are supposed to yearly review that, and then determine, is that money clearly required by your budget? So, we're, that's where we're doing our needs-based assessment. So, what do we consider when we're determining whether a tax levy is properly authorized and clearly required by a tax budget? There's some case law, not a lot, though, and some other legal authority that we use. So, properly authorized and clearly required. Of course, there's no, you know, definition that's been given to us. So, whether the tax will generate more funds than shown to be needed within the budget of the taxing authority or taxing district. So, again, that's our need assessment. Whether the funds are budgeted for the appropriate purpose as voted on by the electorate. So, did you put something on the ballot that said, hey, voters, you're gonna approve a permanent improvement levy, and then you took that money and you spent it on salaries, operating costs? That would be something we would look at. It doesn't come up very often, but that's, that's one of the issues. And the biggest text, the biggest Budget Commission case, the Ohio Supreme Court case, actually from South Russell versus the Budget Commission in 1984. So, it's not on the Budget Commission. Okay, so, whether a taxing authority or taxing unit had the power to impose the tax, and that the enactment of the measure imposing the tax was in compliance with statutory requirements. This is not something that comes up a lot from our perspective of, of looking at this, but there is some, some law, there are some opinions that, you know, if you go to the Board of Elections and you put something on the ballot, the Board of Elections has very limited to no power to stop you from doing that. But if you don't do that correctly, and you are imposing a tax that's not in compliance with statutory requirements, then that actually has to come to the Budget Commission for us to, to make that determination. Whether tax increase serves no other function than to increase the amount of the budget surplus. And this is the Sanborn case, which I'll talk about when I do this for the next, next hearing. Okay, so, not a question of desirability of programs. So, you wanna build a bus garage, you wanna build a new elementary school, you wanna give your teachers a 20% raise, you wanna buy the Goodyear Blimp. That's not for us to decide. That's for your school board to decide. What we're deciding is excessive taxation. Are you, do you have more money, and are you getting more money than you need? Okay, that's it.
Okay, I would recommend that, would you, who's gonna do the, would you, do you go through the numbers of the proposed budget for Berkshire?
Sure. Morning. Berkshire Local Schools submitted their 2024-2025 school year budget. We regain cash balance in their general fund of $3,624,009,000. They are requesting revenue in the amount of $21,409,000. $21,409,980. Budget Commission will consider $21,724,386. Estimated expenses are at $21,174,626.42, leaving an ending cash balance of $4,173,849.58. Their permanent improvement fund shows beginning cash balance of $78,953.42. They are requesting revenue in the amount of $471,359.58. Budget Commission will consider $277,245.58. Estimated expenses are at $515,313, leaving a negative cash balance of $194,114. The bond funding fund has a beginning cash balance of $215,278.65. They are requesting revenue in the amount of $1,269,5731. Budget Commission will consider $1,309,240. Expenses are at $1,219,215.28, leaving an ending cash balance of $305,303.37. Total estimated millage per tax share, 24, 25, 4.5 inside general, 45.3 outside general, 2.6 for bond, summing out to 52.4 for total mills. They also carry a 1.7 Burton Republic Library. Total millage then is 54.10. They did submit legislation to the Auditor's Office to place a levy on the ballot, which is a renewal for their PI, estimated to yield $414,000. They received the benefit of manufactured homes. Last year, they netted a total revenue of $86,813.91.
Let's go first.
You have more power.
I do.
Where do you wanna go?
I'll let you go.
Mr. Flies. No, I'm good. I'll chuck it.
Could you queue up that slide?
Might as well go through his PowerPoint.
So, I, I put together a set of standard slides for every district to kind of walk through, in part, the anomaly which occurred when the reappraisal happened last year affecting everyone's inside millage and a couple of schools' floor adjustments. So, as we load those up. Eric, are you sharing those so that anybody who's on, thank you. So, we could, this is the map of how the reappraisal kind of fell out. The average in the county was 29.5% increase of residential values. That's distributed through all of the, we generally do appraisals by a political subdivision, so by township, city, village. That's not real helpful for schools, because, as you know, schools bridge multiple communities. So, I did modify this chart a little bit, and the area in, we're, you're, we're getting, we need to, you need to start at a way different slide. Michael, can you move to slide 41? You, I think you can. There, yeah. Start from that slide. There you go. You modified this map to reflect the school district that we're currently reviewing, and that's Berkshire. You can see Berkshire, Berkshire has a kind of a figure eight area that covers multiple subdivisions. They are at the floor, at the 20 mil floor. They also identify the number of students they have, and their average res-ag increase in that set of communities was 30.8%. So, slightly above the average for the entire county, but that's indicative in part because they have quite a few, they have a lot of territory. I also chart on an annual basis assessed values. And in the case of Berkshire, for example, their, their 2023 valuation came out with an assessed value of just a little bit north of a half a billion dollars. That's a net adjustment from the previous year of 113 million bucks. That's significant. We ranked all of them. You can see how those values change, and then there's a proportional ripple change to the inside millage calculation based on that.
120.
Arm 21, sorry. We also rank schools by taxation. We do it a variety of different ways. We do it by raw millage, and we also do it by effective millage. I'm not a huge advocate of raw millage, just because you don't know when certain levies are passed, and as a result, you can get an artificially high raw millage number. But the true value of how much a school is being funded, or any entity is being funded, is by converting that to effective mills, which is moving money from the past, or millage from the past into today's dollars. So, as reassessment occurs, the value of one mill changes. And when that changes, it changes your inside millage calculation. So, you can see from a, this is gonna be a long warning. You can see from the raw millage numbers, Berkshire ranked ninth, and, and we did every school district that touched the county. So, it's not just the five districts that are wholly contained in Giaga. We included quite a few, the fringe ones, actually all of them, mostly touching the Chardon School District. But that's like Riverside, Mentor, which one?
Curly.
Curly. So, they're all ranked, Berkshire was ninth when you look at all of them in raw millage. They also coincidentally came up ninth with effective millage, but you can see a change from almost 55 mills raw to 23 mills effective, and they are right at the 20 mil floor. Thing to note is when calculating the 20 mil floor, there are certain levies that are counted when the state does that calculation. Our office doesn't do the calculation. We submit, we simply submit the effective rates to the, to the state, and they calculate the floor, and they make the adjustments to those factors which generate a lifting to the floor. However, the components that are used to calculate the floor are any inside millage, with the exception of any inside millage being transferred to a PI fund, and current expense levies. They disregard all permanent improvement and emergencies. All of those levies are not counted in, in their calculation for the floor. So, that becomes important when you're sitting at the floor, to know how a particular levy is gonna affect your floor calculation. Summarizing the Berkshire area solely, they experienced a rather high new construction valuation of 3.4% for 2024. That lifted some of their levies that allow for new construction to be included. The revaluation changed their inside millage by 30.8%, which effectively produced about half a million dollars and some change of inside millage to them. Because they were at the floor, and because the value of a mill increased, that effectively dropped their floor calculation, which then had to be adjusted by the state, and it was adjusted just north of $1.5 million. And then tax equalization basically balanced the equation, so that if a value shifted from one household to another household, the tax moved with that valuation. This is the effect for the whole county on the reappraisal. So, you can see from this chart, there are a number of factors that, that caused consternation to taxpayers with the effect of a reappraisal. The county receives inside millage. That inside millage of both rose by about $2.5 million. The county elected to mitigate about $2.25 million of that 2.5 million. They did that by reducing another levy that was being placed that was already on the ballot, and then they transferred the money to replace that money from the general fund, which basically leveled the ship. Townships and municipalities, which would include villages and cities, they had an effective increase to their inside millage of a total of $3 million, and they mitigated about $2 million of it, so about 2/3 of it roughly. Schools received two different components. No other political entity receives a floor adjustment. Schools received about $4.6 million in inside millage adjustment, and then another $6 million in floor adjustment. And of those numbers, one school district, West G, mitigated $1 million out of their emergency fund, which they will have to replace with inside millage gain in some other manner. So, the total statistics are, the county mitigated 87% of their inside millage increase. Townships and, and villages and, and the city mitigated 65%, and schools as a whole mitigated 9%, inclusive of both floor adjustment and inside millage. So, it, it turned out to be 87% of the increase of tax to the taxpayers due to the reappraisal is absorbed, is, is provided to the schools. This chart shows the breakdown by school district of how that effect occurred. Since we're discussing Berkshire right now, Berkshire's inside millage moved from about $1.76 million to $2.3 million, which is an increase of about a half a million dollars and some change. Their floor adjustment is 1.5 million, as we indicated. So, they got basically, their vote rose about $2 million, 2.1 million. And you can see that the county only has two fully contained school districts at the floor. One is very close to the floor, and that's Cardinal, but they did not get any floor adjustment. And then there's one outlier, School District Kirkland, which is also at the floor, which received some adjustment from those people that are in Giaga. This is a chart of Berkshire's enrollment. This is an anomaly chart compared to the other ones we've looked at. Berkshire is benefiting from an increased head count of their, of enrollment, which is a good thing. Like I said, the other schools are not experiencing this, but Berkshire is. And then we, we charted what the state also tracks is cash as a percentage of expense, and this is cash in the general fund. So, the, and I'll read the legends, because it's hard, this, I can barely see them. Partially blind, so. The blue line is the cash as a percentage of expenses from 2012 on the left side of the chart to 2023. So, this is year-old data. And the blue line is that of the school district that we are discussing right now. The red line is the average of all of the school districts in Giaga County, and the green line is the state average. So, to put it in perspective, the state average right now is 44.4% as of 2023. This particular school, Berkshire, is half that state amount. So, they're funding as a cash as a percentage of expense in the general fund, 22.4%. I then did some calculations to specifically convert what the budget submission was to what our certified revenue was, because they vary. So, in the case of Berkshire's submission, there may have been adjustments made into the amount of revenue that we are certifying or being proposed to certify today, and that changes the equation a little bit. So, I wanted to run through those numbers. So, this set of numbers is in the general fund, and you can see the revenue is as certified. So, this is gonna be a different revenue number from that submitted, but not by a lot. If you do the same math, if you look at the current year budget, it's going to produce a slight decline of their cash as a percent of expense. It's gonna drop to just a little bit south of 20%, and they were 22.4, I believe. So, you can see it's about a 2% drop, which is, I mean, not necessarily cause for concern, but it is an indicator that is a decline in cash with respect to expenses. I then tracked a general fund revenue per student, and this is kind of an anomaly that lets us track how economies of scale play into school functioning. If you look at a very small populated school, they're gonna generally have a higher cost per student, because the basic needs of the facility have to be met regardless of head count. In the case of Berkshire, that's not the case. They're running a little bit north of $16,500 per student for revenue. They are running $16,152 in expenses per student, so that's very healthy. That means they are spending less on the children than the revenue is, is produced for them. That's a good thing, I believe. I think it's kind of awkward when you're the opposite way, because that means you're bleeding off money. Their cash carryover per student is $3,184. And then I also did it for all of the funds combined. The state only does the general fund as a rule. I also did the same process using all funds, because it is relevant. And in doing so, the numbers change a little, but I, I don't think they, they go crazy. You can see that the estimated cash as a percentage of expense in total climbs to 25%. The revenue changes a little bit, and expense changes a little bit, but overall, there's not a significant change. Next chart is a little hard to read on the bottom scale. These are, from the left to the right is Kenston, then Cardinal, then Chardon, and then Berkshire, and last is West G. These are the three tracking points that we run. The, the green line, which is the left bar, is the general fund revenue per student. The blue bar is the general fund expense per student, and the red bar is what's left per student, the money you have, the cash carryover per student. So, you can see Berkshire is, I think, tied for the lowest, if not the lowest. It's interesting, the comparison between Kenston and Berkshire are, are very, very similar. The only difference being one has a slightly higher revenue compared to student expense, though it has a slightly higher expense versus revenue. It's just a little bit of a flip. All other parameters are very, very similar. It's a very easy pair to model. When we just look at the 2024-2025 budget submission of general fund cash as a percent of expense, and we compare those to the, to all of the school districts wholly contained, you can see that Berkshire is near the bottom of the pack as far as cash as a percent of expense of the general fund. And again, the state averages as of 2023 was 40, I think, 44.1, 44.4, something like that. So, I have very few comments in the budget. I basically wanted just to provide a kind of a summary of the funding mechanisms. Again, caution has to be taken when looking at millage. I am using raw millage, not effective millage, and certainly not 20 mil floor millage. And although it's confusing to taxpayers, there's a distinct difference in why they're tracked differently. Total funding is 56.6 mills. The inside millage is 4.5. They have five current expense levies totaling a little bit north of 45 mills. One permanent improvement levy at 2.5 mills, a bond levy at 2.6 mills, a permanent, another permanent improvement, did I double that? I did. Yeah, forget that. Next permanent improvement one. And then one, so this is version five, I guess, of this, this PowerPoint. Burton Library, they have for 1.7, and they are at the floor at exactly 20 mills and really fractional change. Other than that, I found no anomalies in the budget.
Sure. Beth, as usually, produced a very good report. My only concern is this, this current year, the cash balance is proposed at about $4 million. I'm not sure what the actual cash balance is going to be, but I encourage you to keep it close to what your estimate is. You know, money is money. The, the interest rate environment for all of us right now is, is most enjoyable. Overnight money is paying almost 5%. It's ridiculous. You know, two and a half years ago, it was one basis point, and that was painful. The pain is gone from that perspective. John, I hope that your board had a very lengthy conversation about giving back some of this money. I wish you had given back something that you were receiving $2 million without a vote of the people. I find unacceptable, and any effort would have been appropriate, because it's the taxpayers that support the school, not inflation. My only comments. I have nothing further.
Yeah, I, I thought the budget submission was very good. Think you got a little sideways a couple of years ago when your revenue, the revenue was, you know, off about $800,000, and then the actual expenses were, you know, a good chunk under what, what it ended up being. And then that, that kind of, that skewed your actual ending balance quite a bit by a couple million bucks. More than a couple million bucks. And then that, I think you're still recovering from that. So, the problem is when you, when you're off that much, it can take, you know, two or three years to kind of right that ship. So, I'll be curious what the actual cash balance is at the end. I have a strong feeling it'll be more than the 1.8 million. But, I mean, the, the floor, I guess the floor calculation, kind of my take, I think seeing some of these districts at the 20 mil floor, and they're very well-funded, you know, then I have to look at why are they at the floor, and how were their levies are structured? And in your case, I don't feel that it's really because of your levy structure, you have the anomaly of having this income tax. So, that, that's a, you're a very unusual case in the sense that you're at the floor because of the income tax. It's not like, you know, you've got four emergency levies, or, you know, you're, you know, you had the bond levy, which, you know, that's a great facility, and, and that'll save you money over the long term. And then you've got, you've got a PI levy, a, a small one from 1989, and then, but your, your last current expense levy was 1988. So, yeah, it's really old money. So, it's, I don't feel like there's like a manipulation there. I, I think, hey, you went to your, your voters and said, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna do an income tax, because the property tax burden is something that people are, are talking about, and that's the route you went, and that's what people chose to do. And so, I think you're a very well-funded district to be at the floor, but I think there's a reasonable explanation for that. I don't, I don't think it's because you've structured your levies in a way to, to kind of get these windfalls. So, I guess my only question would be, you know, you're getting more, you got an extra more than $2 million that, that you really didn't expect. I mean, I think that's a pretty fair statement. So, I know every time we say windfall, people win, so get mad. And so, I'll just say an unexpected influx of, of money due to this anomaly with the revales. And so, and then you benefited more because of the floor. So, wasn't just the inside millage money. So, what is the plan for the extra $2.1 million?
So, I, I do want to point out to you that the new construction numbers that you're showing is actually including the new building. So, 15.7 million of that new construction is our building.
Is tax exempt, which is what you're saying.
Then those taxes are never going to be realized. So, that's about 340,000. So, the numbers are, are, are off a little. They're not quite what, what's being shown. We are deficit spending. We try really hard not to deficit spend, and so, you know, I know you don't like to talk about the forecast, but the forecast is what we live by. And so, when I, when I do the November forecast or the May forecast, you know, that puts the board and the superintendent on notice, like, you need to turn this around. We can't keep deficit spending. And so, you know, as soon as the November forecast goes out, we're, we're working on it. I will tell you that we've had an explosion of special ed children. You know, when I do my forecast, I analyze the birth rates, believe it or not, because I need to know five years down the road what my kindergarten mode is going to be. We've had an explosion of preschool special ed. We have seven that were just identified, and we've got, I think, eight more in the queue that are in the process. So, our expenditures are, are gonna change from what was submitted. I'll tell you that right now. They're gonna, they're gonna go up. It's, it's, it's tough to deal with these unknowns, and we can predict, and we can, you know, look at statistics. All we have to, to really look at is history, right? And so, we do our best to, to look at that, and I, I mean, that, that's all I can say about our balances.
Yeah, I'm a little confused. Again, your numbers are close, but I'm seeing in the general fund, estimated revenue 21.7, estimated expense of 21.1. So you're not deficit spending in the general fund. You're not deficit spending in the bond levy fund. There's a deficit spend in the permanent improvement fund, but if that's renewed, there wouldn't be. So you're not deficit spending, really, right?
Telling you that we will be.
Oh, okay. Maybe I misheard you. I thought.
We're anticipating about $1 million in special education.
I'm just telling you, your budget does not indicate you are deficit spending. I just wanted that to be clear.
Is a snapshot in time. You know, in mid-January, when he walked in my office and said, we got seven more preschoolers, you know, $35,000 a pop.
Are you running your own preschool program, or are you sending them all out?
Go next year.
Oh, okay. So right now, it's 100% you're sending them out. Okay, well, that is expensive. Okay, yeah. So again, I think you do a good job on your budget. I think we all agree on that. So, and your numbers are tight, and I think your cash balance is appropriate. So I don't really have any issue. I more or less just wanted to know. I mean, you did get a lot more money. Your taxpayers, you know, had an unvoted tax increase of, you know, $2.1 million. So, but your budget shows a need for that money, so.
An motion approved.
Second.
Aye.
Yes.
You're gonna give her the lunch.
We just did them both. We did them both.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. Probably gotta do mine again, huh?
Yeah, I think. Just because if somebody just requests, like, just one.
Yes, that's fair.
And Michael, can you give us backup first and then share that one, please? It's the same one.
What, yeah. I'll go faster.
So we can go ahead and start, because I think Chris will be back in a minute.
Okay. Next up is West Giaga Local School District, 2024-2025 School District Budget Hearings. Who is here representing West Giaga?
Hi, I'm Karen Pavlott. I'm the Treasurer for West Giaga Local Schools. Dr. Mark Ruff here with our superintendent. Ms. Clay Poles here as a board member, Dr. Gears as well.
Thank you for coming. Okay, I'll go through this again, but maybe I'll comment differently because I think it is different application to this hearing. So this is the Budget Commission's duties as to tax levy review. 570531, Budget Commission shall ascertain that the following levies have been properly authorized, and if so authorized, shall approve them without notification. And these are all levies in excess of the 10 mil limitation. And when we are looking to approve levy collections, then we have to look at whether the levy's been approved by the electors. And we should not allow the levying of taxes unless, outside the 10 mil limitation, unless such a rate of taxation for the ensuing fiscal year is clearly required by a budget of the taxing district or political subdivision. So clearly required is and properly authorized are our main buzzwords that were given. No definitions are given to us in the law, but that's what they're telling us. So what do we consider when determining whether tax levy is properly authorized and clearly required by a tax budget? There's some case law and whether legal authority. So will a tax generate more funds shown to be needed within the budget of the taxing authority or taxing unit? So that's when we're assessing everyone's need. Whether the funds are budgeted for the appropriate purpose as voted on by the electorate. So when you put a tax levy before the voters, there's purpose language given to them, and those taxes have to be spent for that purpose because that's what the voters have authorized. If they're not being spent for that purpose, then that is where the Budget Commission has to step in and look at that. So whether the taxing unit had the power to impose the tax, that the enactment of the measure imposing the tax was in compliance with statutory requirements. So where to take a look at, did you do everything right in levying those taxes legally? And then whether a tax increase serves no function other than to increase the amount of the budget surplus. And that comes from Sandborn versus Hamilton County Budget Commission. Chris, you'll keep me honest here, because I'll do this from memory. So that's kind of an important case for Budget Commission law. There's two main cases. There's the South Russell case from 1984, and then there's Sandborn from 2014. And with Sandborn, what happened there, a little different than what we're dealing with with some of these districts, but it had to do with the 20 mil floor. In that instance, the school district was at the floor. And they went before the Budget Commission and sought to have a portion of their inside millage shifted to permanent improvement. Well, permanent improvement doesn't count towards the floor. So the effect of the Budget Commission approving that shift of inside millage from just the general to permanent improvement dropped the floor. So then taxes had to be recalculated to raise it up to the minimum funding level of the 20 mills, which resulted in an unvoted tax increase. The floor raised, or, well, they raised them up to the floor, the values. And so actually, it's kind of interesting. That Budget Commission, the treasurer and the prosecutor in that county voted for it, and the auditor voted against it. And so the school got what they wanted. So actually, who filed the lawsuit was a group of taxpayers. And they said, hey, we shouldn't, our taxes shouldn't go up. They shouldn't have approved this. When the 20 mil floor raised, the school district got this windfall of money. And oh, by the way, they have a 78% cash carryover to expenses. Was it 78?
Somewhere.
Yeah. And the Ohio Supreme Court didn't get into, of course, they didn't give us any clear guidance on how much money is too much money. But they indicated that 78% was too much money, which I think is helpful. And actually ruled in favor of the taxpayers and undid what the Budget Commission did in shifting the inside millage to permanent improvement. So kind of an interesting case. And because there's so few cases, that's really the one that guides us a lot. So again, not a question of desirability of programs. It's a question of excessive taxation, and it's a question of the need of the taxing authority or unit relative to the sum set forth in the budget as submitted. So our job is to assess need. And looking at that, we have to look at what taxes are levied, how they're levied, if you're at the floor, if you have additional income coming in because of revaluation or floor adjustments, and we have to look at cash carryover.
Thanks.
Yeah, you want to do your.
Can you go back to mine? You don't have to. You haven't stolen the slide that was at?
Should be in the same spot.
Okay. So we're gonna go through the same set of slides that we did for Berkshire, obviously using West G numbers. So again, this is the same map that we generated on the reappraisal. It gives it by city, township, village. And we converted this particular map to school district. And as we would have it, West G is currently at the floor. We give the student count. It turned out, and again, it's like a perfect storm. The average of res ag increase in value is the highest in West G. It's just by look.
Well, unfair. The highest of the ones we're looking at.
What do you mean?
It's poor South Russell people.
Well, yeah, but they're not in this school. Obviously, there's people here that live in South Russell, so.
Ours was like, what, 40?
Yours was 37, but let's call it 40 so you can feel better. 33.3%, and that's averaging in that school district, which of course you could see is the highest in the county. It's just the way the math works. It's the way the valuation of the homes worked. It's the way the market moved. It is what it is. You don't manipulate the numbers, you let the numbers tell a story. As we do the same thing we did with Berkshire, if you look at the school assessed value, you know, West G has, as you would expect, the highest assessed value. As a result of the reappraisal, they went to $1.2 billion in property value. That's an increase of $290 million. Significant, large, but nonetheless, that's how the numbers fall out. School ranking, again, the same story we heard earlier. We look at school ranking with full tax rates as well as effective tax rates, and then we also look at whether they're at the 20 mil floor or not. In this particular case, West G full tax rate is at 47.37. If you convert that to effective tax rate, you're at about 25 mills. If you take out the levies that don't count for floor, they come in right at 20 mills, which is where they were before, and that's what they'll always be at. They'll never drop below the floor because the rates will be adjusted to give them the floor. Again, when the calculation is done, they use inside millage, except if it's moved to PI funds. I don't, you don't have any of those, and you have current expense levies, but we don't count special levies. Emergency levies are not counted. PI levies are not counted. So that's how the math works. Summarizing the experience of the West G area, they got just a little bit south of 0.6% increase due to new construction. Their revaluation rose the vote for inside millage to 33.3%, which was $1.3 million. I want to make note that they mitigated $1 million of that. And I want to personally commend West G for doing that, taking that action. I think when the request was made, we did not, none of us really understood or appreciated what the floor adjustment would do, primarily because we don't calculate that, the state does. And my office did reach out to the state to ask for an estimate. Ron is the one who reached out, and they specifically said, we don't do that. So we tried our best. I think Karen, you worked with Karen, and we got close. I mean, we don't do it, so we don't set that margin increase. That's what the state does. And unfortunately, they do that after we submit our taxes, tax rates at the end of the year. So you don't have a lot of warning or pre-ability to react. You have literally days. West G is at the floor, and as a result of that adjustment by the state, they got just a little bit more than $4.5 million of adjustment. So in total, they got about, if you do the two, it's about 5.8, 5.9 million. They mitigated $1 million of it. And tax equalization moved the tax around. So we've had, I will tell you, we've gotten probably more response, I'll call it response, from taxpayers in the West G area because of the revol effect than other areas, as you would expect. Those, that feedback indicates that people don't generally understand the floor. They don't generally understand tax equalization. So a good example is somebody's house in the West G school district went up less than the average, went up less than 33%. Somebody else's house went up more than the 33 average. What that means is some of the tax that would have been paid by the person who didn't go up as much got shifted to that that was above the average. So that's tax equalization. The total bucket stays the same, but it gets moved around based on valuation. As a result of that, people said, I don't understand why my taxes went down when they're in 33% increase because you were well below the average of your increased market value. Somebody else took that for you. Conversely, the poor guy that got the increase of 33% also got the tax equalization shift if his valuation was greater than 33%. That's part of the mechanics that happened. That happens regardless, and not just the reappraisal, but on our triennial. Never, we might not experience it to this degree before, but it's the market that we're in. The effects, we went through this before, the effects of the reappraisal did generate considerable increase of inside millage to a variety of different enterprises. 87% of that to the county was mitigated. 65% was mitigated by townships and munis, and 9% was mitigated in its entirety by West G. Point that out. They contributed to all of the mitigation represented by schools. And I just want, I can't overstate enough the fact that they did what I think was not popular and was probably a very difficult decision to make. So I appreciate that. When you look at West G and how their numbers broke out, we've gone over this. If you add up their increase in inside millage from 4.27, 4.28 million dollars to 5.58, that's a $1.3 million increase in inside millage and another 4.5 million dollars in floor adjustment. And then they mitigated $1 million of that. That's represented here. This is how their enrollment's going. It's, I guess, non-typical curve as well. It's on an increase, slight decline over one year, but I don't, I mean, one point doesn't determine a trend. It determines a point. But nonetheless, you know, I think some of that you'll see is a combination with no very, right? You can see right where that occurred, and now you're doing the leveling, which would be anticipated. You know, cash as a percent of expense. Now, this is one area of the charts, which, and I appreciate Karen reaching out to me. Because they have emergency levies, the state represents their charting of cash as a percent of expenses slightly differently than all of the other school districts in Giaga because they're the only ones with emergency levies in effect. The state, because emergency levies are generally due to operating issues typically. They, when they do this calculation, they add in the cash and the expenses and the revenue from your O16 fund, your emergency levy fund. So this is not just general fund. It's general fund plus the emergency fund. That's an anomaly unique only to West G. But this is how the state is documenting your number. And I actually got caught in the trap of testing Kenston, who doesn't have an emergency. I found what numbers they used. I then rinse and repeated. I got to yours, and I said, this is the number, and it didn't jive, and Karen caught it. So I appreciate that. So you can see from this chart again, blue is West G. The red line is the county's average. The green line is the state average. As of last year, the state. average. The green line is the state average. As of last year, the state average was 44.4. West G was running about 84.1. Now, that's, you're going to see that it's cooking a little bit, and we're going to talk about that. Budget summary, I did the same thing that I did with other districts, with the exception that, again, because this is the anomaly with emergency levies, because we're using the combination of the emergency levy fund and the general fund, I changed this footprint a little bit. So, you can see the numbers, you can't just read off of our white sheet. You have to add the two, if you're doing this yourself. Karen does, but probably nobody else does. If you look, that produces a ending balance of about $29 million in totality of those two funds put together. That predicted, now, this is a predictor. This has not happened. If expenses go up, this number is going to drop. If expenses go down and revenue goes up for some reason, this number will go up. They're running, they're predicted to run about 80%. They're going to drop about four points from two years ago. We don't have this year, so we're skipping a year. You get the year before produced by the state. Current year is what you're doing right now. This is a future. If you do the math and look at the general fund revenue per student, they're running about $18,800 per student. Their expenses are running $17,800. That's a good trend. I believe it's good to have your expenses less than your revenue, just as a mathematician, but not always does that happen. And then the carryover cost per student is running about $14,000 per student. If you take in all of the funds, so this would include any PIs, any other funds, including bonds, the numbers change, not materially, but they do represent themselves differently. It drops your percent cash, your cash as a percent of expenses to just a little bit south of 70%. Your total revenue per student goes to $21,000. Total expenses is at 21,000. Again, the good news is your expenses are less than your revenue, another good trend. And lastly, is your carryover is at $14,684 per student. Again, comparing to other districts, far right is West G. The trend is very similar, actually, to Cardinal, with the exception that the revenue and expense lines are flipped, right? They're a little bit opposite. There is obviously a higher uptick in cash remaining per student. Is the 2024, 2025 budget as submitted, general fund and emergency fund cash as a percent of, I think this was the chart you were referring to, so this is adjusted from the previous presentations. The proportions are relatively the same. The magnitude is slightly lower. So, the far right-hand side is West G. The far left-hand side is Kinston, and we do this in order of the years. The only, I did the same thing I did for the other districts. I listed the funding sources. You're at 47 raw mills. You have 3.5 mills inside with one mill going for permanent improvement. You have three current expense levies totaling 38.8 mills, two emergency levies totaling 4.07 mills, and that's, and that's completely the reduction, I believe. Yes, because you have a five-point-some emergency. Yeah, very important. Yep. And then you are at the floor at 20 mills exactly. The note that I made here is, I don't have, we don't have details provided of what expenditures are in the emergency fund. I don't know if you're transferring that to the general fund or if you're spending it out of it. We get line items, revenue, expense. That's what we run off of. I don't have the granularity of what.
We spend, what we bring into that, for salaries and use it.
Okay.
Try to keep the zero balance in there.
And then the only noted item is, and again, this is unique, well, there's only two districts, I think, that experienced this, is that your general fund plus the emergency, so I've been combining those two, your revenue exceeds your budgetary expenditures by two, about two factors, and that's just in the math. That's like that.
Couple of questions. You have that packet that shows the history with the blue and black comparisons going back. I'm looking forward to 2024, 25, the permanent improvement estimated revenue.
Yes.
Goes up by 200 and some percent.
Yeah, we made a transfer of $2 million this year.
Oh, okay.
To the PI levy.
Okay.
To take care of some water filtration plant that we'd like to build.
And?
We're struggling with that. We're liking to, if anything with the EPA, we appreciate.
Our friends at ECA. Is there a levy on the ballot for new facilities?
Not at this point. What the board has done in October, the Master Facility Planning Committee, the community came together and presented two options to the board. The board then looked at those options in January, on January 31st, so just recently, to determine what a plan would be for the facility. So, that would be a 25, 50-year plan, which would take our four buildings. You see our enrollment is stabilizing it, too. We don't need four buildings. So, we'd like to move everything to two buildings and a campus, but that would require us to consolidate a 612 building. We have not put anything on the ballot. From, the board has not done that yet, and we are now just identifying the plan that we have in place. What is this going to look like in 25 years or 30 years? So, that'll be a 612 building and a K5. We also went to the Ohio Facilities Committee, Commission. They, that's what they determined the district as a whole would need going forward.
Have you hired, hired an architect?
No, we've not hired an architect. The architect worked with us to develop the Master Facility Plan, and they do that to kind of look at site plan, look at what size building you would need. They worked with the OFCC to determine kind of what our facility needs were based on a 10-year enrollment plan.
So, Ed, as you know, I'm concerned about cash hoarding.
Absolutely.
West G has done an exemplary job of hoarding cash, to the point of, well, right now, you have $26 million pretty much in the bank. I'm sure it's invested pretty well, so you're going to be making about 5% anyway. And your estimated cash, ending cash balance for 2024, 25 is $29 million. Some, some of that.
Is triggered by the revaluation.
20-mil windfall is in cash.
Yes, currently.
So, the rumors are all over the place about the new building, but clearly, no levy is proposed.
Correct.
No architect has been hired. So, that tells me it's about a two-to-five-year process, but the rumors are out there. So, that's an indication to me, a lot of that anticipated excess cash balance of $29 million has got to go back to the taxpayers right now.
We are looking at how, we have a lot of deferred maintenance that was made as we've been going through this Master Facility Plan. It started in 2018. It postponed during COVID, and we are now looking at what needs to be done in the buildings. We have enormous amounts of deferred maintenance that needs to be done in the buildings that we currently have. We, that's one of the reasons we transfer the $2 million. The board is in our five-year forecast again. We look at additional transfers to that PI fund to take care of some pressing needs that we have in the buildings. One is a water treatment plant. That is going to be approximately $2 million. We just had a bid package for the middle school windows and doors. We just had that bid come through. That's another $600,000. Generators for security, another $600,000. We have technology hub, another $400,000. We have a number of projects that we've kind of waited on and looked at until this Master Facility Plan was designed. In addition to that, we have, in the PI fund, we've been looking at replacing our turf, which is at end-of-life next year, or the year after. It just depends on when you can do it. That's another $1 million, plus the track that will have to be associated with that as well. So, there's another, a large projects that we are going to be utilizing these funds for that will, as you look at the Master Facility Plan, we're seeing, what are the things that we can take care of now that we wouldn't have to ask taxpayers for later? And that's, when you look at the middle school, that's one of the buildings that we're looking to keep. So, with the Master Facility Plan, a big, big component of that was, which building would you keep? Would you keep the middle school and renovate it, or would you keep the high school and renovate it? And that took a lot, a great deal of time to determine. And so, now that the middle school has been selected, a lot of those renovation dollars will go there.
Karen, is the master plan completed?
The master plan idea has been completed.
Not the idea, it's the master plan completed.
We've completed the estimates for renovation, and we've completed kind of highlighting what needs to be done at the middle school. And if the total renovation was like 30 million, and so we went through and identified what had to be done to that building over the next five years. And that was about 13, 14 million dollars.
Is it now a public document?
It is a public document.
Because it appears to me, your estimated expense is $31 million for this, for 24, 25.
Yeah.
You estimate you're going to have $29 million in the bank, but never in the past eight years has your estimated ending cash balance been less than the actual. So, you're, you're going to have more than $29 million. I'm pretty confident.
It'll be around.
I'll make that bet. That means you have 90% of all the money required to operate for a full year without getting a dollar from the taxpayers.
And we have.
This is after you've already made the $2 million transfer to PI. So, maybe you should move another $2 million into PI. I don't know. The master plan would help dictate that.
Help dictate that, yes.
But in the meantime, West Giaga has an embarrassingly amount of excess cash. I tried to calculate what would be the appropriate amount to go back to the taxpayers, and no other school in the county enjoys as much cash as you enjoy. But even if we went to a 60% cash balance instead of a 90% cash balance, that could be as much as $12 million going back to the taxpayers. Now, I am but one member of the Budget Commission, but it's, I believe it is our job to treat every entity with the same concerns. There is not a single other entity that has the resources that you do, both in percentage or actual dollars, and so I am laser-focused on reducing this excessive cash balance. If it's going to be used for a school building or the master plan, that's fine, but it's not being proposed. It's not on the ballot. You haven't hired an architect. It's just out there talking about it. Everybody loves to hold cash in case we need it. You have not yet made that step, or the board has not yet made that step to say, "This is what we're going to do." In the meantime, you, you keep hoarding even more money. In 2015, I know that was a long time ago, you had 12 million bucks.
Right.
Your operating expense then was 19 million bucks. Now, you have $29 million, and your operating expense is only $2 million more. That's wrong, and I'm hopeful that I will find more support from the other Budget Commission members to bring some normalcy to this extraordinary cash position that you enjoy. I have nothing further.
We also had the Newberry merger that added some cash to their, to our balances, and we did take care of some additional facilities there that we needed to demolish. That was taken care of. In addition to the additional funding of this year, which was an anomaly, I don't think anyone, that's one of the reasons that the board voted to reduce it $1 million, was something that was more than what we had expected as well. The Master Facility Plan, like I said, just got the agreement from the community, and we also had the board approve that. So, they're working. We've already submitted a bid. We're already in that process of taking care of some of those items on that Master Facility Plan, so we're showing progress as well. We are in, we're drilling, we're doing sonic testing for the well and filtration plant. We're getting designs for that, which is working with a consultant that will design the plant first, and then we'll take that out with an architect. So, those things are right there, almost $3 million right there. And we're looking at that.
I'd like to correct one thing, because, because the emergency fund needs to be with the general fund.
Or the six million.
Well, yeah, 5.5 is your estimate, six million. This year, 5.5 next year. You have, we have to, you have to add that to the expense item, Chris, is what I'm saying. You're looking at the general fund expense of 31 million predicted for 2024.
And it's number 5.5.
Because you're ending up with a zero balance.
So, 38 million.
700 bucks a year.
Those wash.
No, no, the expenses go.
The expenses.
Our expenses will be close to the general. Well, they do, but you have to, if your cash as a percent of total expenses have to include those as expenses. So, the percent isn't going to be, again, that was my mistake when I originally did it, is I was just using general fund for, like everybody else. The state considers. The state considers, yeah, the state considers emergency funds just like general fund money when they're doing that calculation.
It's included as our general fund.
Yep.
And we use that for all of ourselves.
I would be concerned with that if you were, forgive the word, hoarding money in the emergency fund.
Right.
If you had a cash, a significant cash balance at the end of the year, because theoretically, then it would be out of our eyes if you're just looking at general fund. But the reality is the state is looking at that on their chart. So, we've got, we've got true numbers of prediction, and you're looking at 80%, not 90%.
If I could just add something, Eric. I know that one of the, one of the benefits of the Newberry acquisition was a significant increase in revenue stream, about $5 million a year, correct, in terms of revenue. I also know that when we looked at the situation we had, because lending to territories like that is a fairly heavy lift, we did approach our state legislators and ask if there would be some form of incentive related to new construction, because we knew that new facilities were needed, and we were basically never met with, with any hope that we could, that we could benefit from the, the territorial transfer of Newberry to West Giaga. As a result of that, our percentage of state funding for new facilities, even through the OFCC, is 5%. So, much of what we do here, when we look at the millage, where we're going to ask, if we do, if the board does decide to put a bond issue on the ballot, the lift for the, the taxpayers of West Giaga will be significant, and much of what we do in order to drive it to school campus will have to be locally funded with some of the monies that we currently have available. One of the things that we've done, we've hired two architectural firms really to work on the master plan. We had one pre-pandemic, and we had one post-pandemic. At this stage of the game, the next decision is in the board's hands because they have the master plan. The board has to decide if and when it's going to place a bond issue on the ballot to pursue, to realize the master plan, and at that time, really, was when we would have to hire an architect for a design of the buildings. But at this stage of the game, the master plan has been formalized. It's documented. It's in the hands of the board, and we've worked with two, two architectural firms to do the master plan. One was pre-pandemic. Pandemic put everything on hold. The acquisition of Newberry had us recalculate the master plan, because now we had a new township in, and we needed to give the residents of Newberry an opportunity to weigh in on the master plan. So, I say that to explain somewhat the rather elongated timeline we've had in going through this, but the, the need for upgraded facilities in West Giaga is, is significant. We've just taken people on, on public tours of the building to show them that. We have some significant infrastructure needs in the existing buildings, and if the board does not go for a bond issue, they're going to be putting a great deal of money into the existing facilities.
Now, everybody has a different opinion of how to fund initiatives such as buildings. Everybody, there's a variety of different approaches, and this board probably has varied approaches as well. I do have some consternation with using accrued cash to pay for a significant capital improvement, like a new building. I mean, if you're doing a remodel or improvement, that's different, but I'm talking about a complex. And the reason I take issue with it is because, basically, then, people are being taxed for future benefit, and they could move before that benefit is derived. So, in a sense, some of this money that's been accrued is from past taxes that have been levied and collected, and yet, the building isn't in place. They're not, they're not experiencing the rise of their property values because of the new school, yet they're paying for it. So, I tend to want most huge projects like building initiatives to go before voters. Yet they're paying for it. So I tend to want most huge projects like building initiatives to go before voters. Because they're the ultimate say or nay. I mean, I mean, and that's, again, we're sitting in a building that didn't go to the voters for this building and I wasn't that decision maker. But that is my criticism of it. It's, you know, I'm not saying people don't need it, but I'm, I'm thinking that is part of our process. The democratic way is to give people the ability of weighing in whether they want it and they're willing to pay for it or not. I don't think we should just take it. That's, again, that's my personal opinion. There's no math behind that.
And I will say one other thing. On the Newberry merger, we did reduce, the Newberry residents reduced to 14 mils on their tax bills through the merger. And the West Giaga taxpayers did get a two, two mil reduction in their taxes because of the merger as well. And.
They're both thinking that the fired departments swept them with the economic law.
I know. That's not your fault.
It allows, it allows the residents to have those safety services in place that they probably would not have passed.
You're exactly right. And I think the lesson here is there are competing interests there for this money. And, you know, Newberry, you know, I got the calls and people said, wow, my tax bill really dropped. And then the next year, what the heck did you do to me? And when you voted for this levy, it's 5.5 mils. And it's today's money. It's huge. And that's just what happens. That's the math how it works. And, you know, it, it's unfortunate for the school that that happened because I think there would have been a benefit to having some longer term derived reduction for those, those people, because they are a big voting block.
Right. So you don't have control over other entities.
And then the other point, and I'm, I'm not trying to paint myself as a, as a victim here, but we have no say over reappraisal either. That was, you know, you can use windfall if you want or whatever. It was, it was a definite boost to school budgets.
I've, I've just been very, I've just been sick about this, to be honest with you, because there, there's. We did a deep dive on your district when I mean, like off Chrissy from my office and mostly her. But we, we did a deep dive on, on this 20 mil floor. Because you have so much money, yet you're at this minimum funding level that, that the state has. And, and that's what's caused this, you know, kind of outsized windfall, we'll call it that. So unexpected revenue. And, and it's a lot of money. It's.
And that's why the board mitigated the million dollars.
Yeah. And, and that's what, so there's two, I think what I talked about earlier, there's, there's two things we're supposed to look at. And 99% of the time, I think what this board is looking at, we're pounding on clearly required and, and we're looking at cash balances. Sometimes I think we look too much at cash balances, but, but we look at cash balances and I, I think that's where Chris is scribbling down some crazy numbers over there. So, you know, he's on the cash balance, but when we started looking at the levies, um, we kind of took a deep dive into this purpose, the proper purpose of these levies. And I think you felt victim a little bit of just renewing existing. It's easier to renew, right? You've got these levies on the ballot and you're going to renew them. So.
Renewed almost 10 years ago.
Well, I've got a chart. So Chrissy made a color coded chart of all your levies from 1961. So I handed that out.
And then 3.7 million, or 3.7 million levy was almost 10 years ago.
So.
Eight years ago.
Well, there's renewals. So, so you've got this.
When our balance was much different.
I understand, but, but we're going to get into the ballot language and, and that's where I, I'm like sick to my stomach because I, I, it, it's leading me to a conclusion that I don't necessarily want to reach, but the, so there's two issues here. There's, do you have, is your cash balance such that the money you're getting, that, that we have to approve, these revenues? Is it clearly required by your budget? So your, your revenue exceeds your budgeted expenditures by a little over $2 million, 2,081,000. Right? We've arrived at the correct number that's under.
Yeah, that's, that's combining.
Both funds.
Both funds.
General fund plus emergency revenue exceeds budgeted expenditures by 2 million.
And balances.
81,631. So, so you're going to run a $2 million plus surplus based upon this budget.
On those reevaluations, yes.
And, and again, it also pains me because you're the only school district in Ohio, as far as I know, that looked at this and, and returned money to the taxpayers. So I, I like to reward good behavior. And, and I think that you set an example and you, you, maybe you're bored, but you probably took a lot of grief because nobody else wanted to do that. You made them all look bad. So, um, so I, I, I get that, but we got to look at these levies and, and I, there, I, I'm not on Chris's, I mean, there is certainly an argument to be made that an 80%, I mean, in that Sanborn case, a 78% cash, the Supreme Court, without a hearing, just found as a matter of law that that was too much money. So you, I think you've got an issue there with the cash carryover. I really do. But I'm on a different, I'm on a different tangent here and it's these emergency levies. So I, I wanted to, I gave you a handout. I wanted to talk about them. And, and let's maybe talk through this. So the reason you're at the floor and, and your voters have not been kind to you, that, that's kind of my, that's my characterization of.
Up to pants a levy.
It is, it is. And this chart was, this chart was really good because the only non-emergency new money that you've gotten, you got a PI levy in 12 for 2.75 mils.
We did not renew that.
Correct. So.
You did, they did attempt to renew it.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah. It failed in 17. Yeah. So you really, you really haven't had any, and everything you've put on the ballot since 1992 was an emergency or a PI. So that's why you're at the floor. You don't have, your last current expense levy that passed was in 1989. So that is very old money at this point. You put on two current expense levies in 91, both of those lost. Then on 19, in 1992, the district kind of jumped on this emergency train, we'll call it. And, and I have no doubt that in 1992, there was an emergency. You, you had just lost, you know, two attempts at a, at a current expense levy. So I'm sure, I don't have the numbers, but probably was an emergency. So.
And, and their fixed fees, I think, and they're for a fixed period of time. And I think that's what a lot of the voters wanted to see is that, you know, come back to us when you need money to meet their needs at that time.
The, the, the big problem here is when, and I'm gonna, I have your, I have your board resolutions. I attach those. But I also have the, what was on the ballot. So Chrissy did some research through the, through the board of elections. So you have, you're currently collecting on two emergency levies. Everything else is old money. Your, your permanent improvement levy expired and you're, you've got this 1989. It was the 1989 current expenses. Is that right?
Correct.
That's, so, and that, that's old money. So your new money is the emergent, the two emergency levies. And that's why you're at the floor. Those don't count. So that, because you're at the floor and because the money you're collecting is emergency money, is labeled emergency money, that's where you got this, was a four and a half million dollar floor adjustment. So then we looked at, okay, what can you spend emergency money on? And what did you tell the voters? So there's two ways you could put an emergency levy on the ballot. It must be to provide for the emergency requirements of the school district. Of course, emergency is not defined anywhere. So we're going to have to use common new usage, I guess, but it must be to provide for the emergency requirements of the school district or to avoid an operating deficit. At the time you pick one. So they picked emergency requirements. The board and back in 2003 and 2009, five, I'm sorry, 2003 and 2005, those were the first levies. Those are the first, your current emergency levies are a 2003 first passed and a 2005 first passed. So at that time, the board said, it's not to avoid an operating deficit. It's to provide for the emergency requirements of the school district. And so it can only be for a single purpose, being emergency requirements. And it must identify the amount of money necessary to be raised for that specific purpose for each calendar year the millage is to be imposed, which, which you, you mentioned before that was done correctly. So the, the 2000, well, let's get into when these were renewed. So originally in February of '03, it was a 6.6 mil emergency levy for four years. That was then renewed in May of '07 at 5.64 mils for five years. That was then renewed in May of '12 at 5.6 mils for five years. And then in November of 16, that levy was, was renewed for 5.8 mils for 10 years. And that's, you're collecting that now. So that's going to go to '26. The other levy was passed in '05, 3.93 mils for five years. It was renewed in November of '09, 3.53 mils. I'm sorry, 3.93 was renewed at 3.53 for five years. Then it was renewed again in May of '15, that special election, 3.7 mils for five years. And then that emergency, which you're currently collecting on that levy, was renewed in May of '19, that special election, at 3.5 mils for 10 years. So you've renewed, so, and again, Karen, don't take any of this, you have very little to do with any of this, so virtually nothing to do with any of this, actually. So when I say you, I mean the district. And I think the board in 2015 and 2019, it made a grave error here.
I would say it was prior to the Newberry transfer. And at the time, that, that there would be a need for a levy at that time with, without passing those emergency levies. In the five-year forecast, there would have been, there would have been a need for that levy to come onboard. With the territory transfer of Newberry, that certainly added an additional revenue stream that is now in place.
So.
And when they made those decisions in '19, that was not even a discussion.
Even if that's true, this is where I get into this, where I'm sick to my stomach, because I don't, I don't know what. I think I know what we have to do and I, I don't particularly want to do it. So the resolution, I attached a resolution. So I've got the resolution from 2016. I think that's the second page of your handout. So resolution for renewal of an existing tax levy in order to raise $3.7 million each year for 10 years for the purpose of providing the emergency requirements of this district. So that was put before the voters and I didn't copy this page for you, but, but that's the, that's what was on the ballot. So that's what your folks voted for. Shall a levy renewing an existing levy be imposed by the West Giaga local school district for the purpose of providing for the emergency requirements of the school district? Some of 3.7, $3,700,000 on a levy of taxes to be made outside the 10 mil limitation estimated by the county auditor to average 5.8 mils for each dollar valuation. And that, that renewal passed. So, and then 2019, School Board. I think I gave you that, right? Yes, 2019. Well, it's a, it's a 2018 resolution. So you went, oh, you did it in December. So it must have, it was a special election in the spring. So whereas on the May 5th, 2015 elect, oh, so you wanted to renew that levy. So, and it says that the school board said the tax shall be levied as a renewal for the emergency needs of the district. And that's a $2,350,000 for 10 years. And then that was put on the ballot in the same way. Shall a levy renewing an existing levy be imposed by the school district, providing for the emergency requirements of the school district? So what I'm getting at, and I think you probably can figure that out, is so I'm looking at when these were renewed. We can't look at when they started. I, I will, even though I don't have the numbers, I will blindly agree, because I think it's a pretty safe bet, that in 2003 and 2005, there was an emergency and it had emergency requirements. No doubt in my mind. Maybe you did in '07 and '09. I don't have those numbers. Maybe you did in '12. I don't have those numbers on my sheet. And I, I, I didn't think it was necessary to go dig them up. Maybe you did in '15. I have some of those numbers. But let's look at '19 and '16. So in 2016, when you asked the voters, we need emergency money. In 2016, your general fund cash balance was $13,244,824 against the actual expenses of $18,475.
You have to add.
Okay, so the emergency expense, there's an ending balance there too, but okay, we'll add in the emergency expenses. Yeah, 6 million bucks. So you've got, if I add them together, you've got $26 million of expenses of $13 million in cash. In 2019, you had about the same, about 27 million in expenses-ish. And your cash carryover in '19 had gone up to 16,800,000. Plus you had a little bit of money in the emergency fund. So there's the issue of wasn't an emergency then. I'm, I'm having trouble seeing that there was an emergency then, when they were renewed for 10 years. But I think on the flip side, instead of arguing about, you know, wasn't an emergency in '16 and '19, I don't think there was. I don't think the numbers showed that there was an emergency. I mean, is it an emergency if you have $16 million in cash versus those expenses? Do you think that, that was an emergency?
I think when you look at the five-year forecast and our past election passage rate, that you have to.
Okay, so, but let's look at five years. Your cash balance grew in the general fund in five years from 15.8 million. One, two, three, four, well, we're to five, we're at like 29 million. So again, the forecast is different than what actually ended up happening, but.
That, again, Newberry was not included in that revenue stream.
I understand, but your cash carryover doubled in that five years. Is that fair to say? So what I'm having all this heartburn about is when we look at a levy, I mean, Chrissy, am I right? It says, when we look at a levy, I'm not looking at, we can argue about '16 and '19. I, I don't want to. I don't think there was an emergency then, but, but we could debate that. Okay? Because it's, it's changed. Things have changed. Newberry came in. That ended up being a, a significant benefit, I think, to the school district. Because she didn't take on a lot of kids. You didn't have enough kids for the infrastructure you had. I mean, you had open enrollment. Your, your enrollment had fallen. You know, you absorbed those kids and then you got that tax base. So I think that was a good thing for, for everybody involved. I think it was good for Newberry people. I think it was good for, for everybody else. But I guess, Chrissy, I mean, we're supposed to look at the tax every year, correct?
Yeah. You should be reviewing every tax levy as to need and as to whether it's properly authorized. So yes, those past years excluded, being that this year's budget, that's before the commission. This particular, are these particular levies properly authorized and clearly required by the budget that's before them?
If this was, these were current expense levies, then we would just, we would be, we would be in Chris's world. We'd just be debating cash carryover. If, if this, if these levies said current expense.
If they were current expense, would they be at the 20 mil floor? We wouldn't be.
We, no.
I, I don't know.
We would be at the 20 mil.
Would you?
We're pretty close to the 20 mil floor.
No, if they were current expense levies.
If they were, I think we dropped down to almost 16%. If they were, I think we dropped down to almost 16, 16 mil, I believe, is what we had talked about. Yeah, and then those added on would be close to the 20 mil floor. So we would still be hovering there.
So, but again, I think we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be talking about levy language and what your voters approved. You, you, the school, not you, but your, your, your school, your school board, you gotta take all the arrows, though. The school board told the voters, we need emergency money. And we need it for 10 years at two different levies. And every year, and the voters said, okay, we'll renew those for 10 years. And so every year, you're asking the voters for emergency money to set. And that can only be spent on the emergency needs of the school district.
What, what is the emergency?
Well, that's where I'm struggling. How can you be, how can you have $20 million of cash and have an emergency? What's the emergency right now, this year, in this budget? Is there an emergency?
$20 million.
So, so I mean, you agree there's not an emergency.
And that was the reduction of the one mil is coming out of that emergency levy.
I know, which I want to give you full credit for.
And in her, her defense, you didn't know you were going to get four and a half million at that moment. You didn't know it till late. When did you discuss it with Karen? You guys estimated it November, December? I mean, we were like at the end of the year. So, I mean, I think that's a consideration, but the math still doesn't matter.
Yeah, and, and here's where I, I mean, the other thing, I'm, the reason I'm, I've been in your, you know, despite what everybody thinks, I've been in all your buildings, all the school districts that are here. I've been in your buildings. I was in three of them a week, 10 days ago. So three different, three different district buildings. So I know what the buildings are like. I know there's people in Newberry that drive 45 minutes towards the elementary school, which is totally ridiculous. Okay, so I get, I totally, I get that. I, I was just in the high school. I mean, the HVAC in there is awful. It's not a great building. So it, it, so it's, that's what pains me because I think there's a need for these, for these funds. I don't, they're not, I don't think the budget shows that they're clearly required. And I think the cash carryover is too high. And I think Chris has a point. But where I'm struggling is you're collecting emergency money and it's not an emergency. There's not an emergency right now. And the law requires us to not allow you to collect money for a purpose that you told the voters. The purpose was for X. The vote, hey voters, you're going to give us money for an emergency. And the law requires us to look at that and say, if you're not spending the money on an emergency, then you can't collect that money. That's not my opinion or their opinion, that that's what the law requires. Is that fair, Chrissy? I mean. If you were, if you were getting PI money and using it for salaries, we would have to take the PI money away from you. Or, or say, you better change your budget and put a roof on. You can't use it for salaries. You're using the voters-approved emergency money and there's no emergency. Like, I can't even conjure up an emergency. You hit your, your $2 million revenue over expenses.
With the revaluation.
Yeah, and the, and I get it. This is, this is windfall money we're expecting. Do you see where I'm coming from? I mean, do you understand, I mean, right?
I think this emergency levies have been utilized as funding mechanisms in public schools. And these are renewed for a five-year period or 10-year period.
I, I agree, but I, I don't think that's.
And I think at that time, when they were passed, that those were times when we would have deficit spending predicted during those times. So that would be an appropriate use of that levy at that time.
I think it was, but I think when we have to look at the year-to-year collection of it, we have to determine, are you in an emergency? And the taxpayers only approved giving you money for emergency purposes? And if there isn't an emergency, we have to do something about that. I mean, that, that's what I'm sick to my stomach about because it's a lot of money, a lot of money. I mean, the way these levies are structured, you haven't had anything but an emergency on it since 1999, you know? Like, you haven't collected anything other than an emergency since 1989. So that's a big part of your funding. And.
And we work very hard to spend what we bring in.
Wait, wait a minute. You work very hard to spend what you take in?
Not to spend more than what we're going to, I misspoke.
To a deficit.
We're working with that. We took on the additional Newberry transfer. That has created some, some, like we said, a revenue stream that wasn't predicted during those emergency levies.
I, I, I understand what you're saying completely. My question is, does the timing of the Newberry territory transfer not impact the rationale for posting those levies prior to the territory transfer? The territory transfer didn't occur until 2020. And it exacerbated, as you know, the need for new facilities. And as you say, you've been in our facilities, they're not great. I guess one of my frustrations, and it's a rhetorical question, I'm not asking you to answer it, but what incentive is there for school districts to consolidate, to achieve economies of scale, to give benefits to the taxpayers? To give, as Karen said, it was a 14 mil reduction in Newberry. And Newberry moved from being 338th in the state rankings to 10th when they became part of West G. I mean, there are some things there that I think were very beneficial for the kids of Geoga County. And were beneficial for the taxpayers and beneficial for, for West Geoga. It's just frustrating because it was a heavy lift and now we're saddled with the need for new facilities. And as you say, it would be a benefit to people so that they would deploy their transport time and our bus routes would be more efficient, et cetera, if we could, if we could centralize and add new facilities. And, and some of this is certainly amplified. The need is amplified with the acquisition of Newberry. And I think the climate changed a lot in 2020 when Newberry came onboard.
Or 2021, yeah. And I think, you know, again, with the master facility plan, the, and we started in 18. We've now finalized it. Takes a while to do those things that we have identified the needs and we're starting to, to take care of those needs now. We, like I said, we had a bid package that just was opened last week. And we have the well that's moving forward as well. So there's a number of projects that we now can take on because we know which buildings are going to be standing in, in a long term, in a 25-year, 25 to the plan. So those needs will be there.
So.
And we did make a $2 million transfer to the BI fund to take care of some of those needs this year.
Yeah, I, I know.
And when would, you know.
Karen, you do a really good job too. That's another thing.
As we're taking that money, so it's elongating, you know, when do you ask a taxpayer for our next levy? So we're trying to expand, like I said, the last, our last new money was in 2005. So we're trying to expand that. We've not gone back to the taxpayers. We've not passed an income tax. We've not asked for any of those things. So we've, we've, you know, we've tried to live with what we, and we've made some good decisions in doing that. And so I think that's the other part of that.
You have, you have part of the, I, I would say, part of the, part of the problem. There's a problem here and this was created by some very good decision-making. So, you know what I mean? I mean, that's, and, and a really good thing with, with, you know, absorbing Newberry was a good thing.
And I think the revaluation, like, like you said, you know, were we going to be on the 20 mil floor? Or are we not going to be on the 20 mil floor? It's touch and go. I mean, so that had created a, an additional revenue stream that we did not, I mean, that wasn't predict, that was not looked at when we looked at the request for levies.
I might also point out that there have been numerous things done to reduce our costs over the last number of years. So instead of keeping the number of teachers the same as we had 10 years ago, let's say, we reduce the number of teachers that we have so that our cost per student would go down.
Yeah, no, I think that's a, you know, I think that that's a. And listen, I mean, you look at the state scores and the state rankings and what you spend per student, I, you know, nobody is going to say that, that you're doing something wrong. But. The problem, the problem is this emergency, I, I don't know. I've been wracking my brain about this because, you know, on the one hand, I could sit here and say, well, there's not an emergency, so they shouldn't collect any emergency levy money. Which would be a, a pretty punitive result. Not as punitive as what Chris just threw out there, but not nearly as much. But the, um, the, the, the floor adjustment when fall was what, you went to 4.6?
4.5.
4.5 million? This is just me, I, you know, but my thought is that we suspend collection of the 2012 emergency levy, which brings in 3.7. And then you're getting credit, I'm giving you credit for the million. So I'm giving you credit for what you did. And effectively what that would do is it would eliminate the 20 mil floor windfall. So would, it would give back the 20 mil floor windfall. And, and I guess my rationale, I, I think arguably, since there's not an emergency, arguably, you know, we could suspend collection of both emergency levies. That is, that gives me way too much heartburn. The, the $4.7 million gives me too much heartburn, but.
I would argue. Correct me if I'm wrong. If we reduce revenue more than $2 million, theoretically, they go into emergency. Because their revenue now is less than their expenditures. Isn't that one of, one of the definitely?
Yeah, but they didn't pick that for their levies. That's the problem.
We picked the 3.7.
Well, you don't know. I asked, what is an emergency? And it's.
Under the statute, there's two, well, Chrissy can explain it.
So purpose is a 5705194, which is what this levy was passed under. You have to, so first of all, when a school district does that, they are supposed to be doing it at any time that the revenue that will be raised by all tax levies, which the district is authorized to invoke, when combined with state and federal funding, will be insufficient to provide for either the emergency requirements or they can see that they would be otherwise operating at a deficit. You can only pick one of those purposes, which is what Jim.
They picked the first or two.
They picked the emergency requirements because I don't think at the time, well, probably these levies were passed, they were operating at a deficit, but they may have been closed back when it was an additional tax. Definitely not when we had the renewals. There's some sort of like fiscal, it's fiscal emergency that is going on. At the same time, I think that you have that idea tied to the purpose of the tax levy. But then you still overarching, still have your duties as the budget commission of, is this levy properly authorized? Is it clearly required? And you can still be looking to those factors of what is this cash carryover? Are, are these monies that are budgeted for special purposes being used for those purposes? All those things that you guys typically look at as a whole.
See, that's my, my, my issue. We've got, we've got two of them. Normally it's your cash carryover is too high. Is, is, are your, are these tax revenues clearly required by your budget? That's what we're almost always doing. That's when we're, you know, beating up poor Claire in a township, you know, because they didn't pave a road for five years. So.
Equilibrium.
Yeah, that's, so I, I guess that, that, and that's where, you know, Chris is throwing out this $12 million. So we'll calm them down. But, but I think that, you know, that's just a cash carryover evaluation, right? The, we're looking at the, there's a second prong to this that we have to look at that we've never had really deal with. Are they collecting money that was authorized by the voters and it's not being used for that purpose? That purpose, there's no emergency. So the purpose of, of those levy collections is gone for this one year. We have to look at it year to year. And so we've really got, I mean, I guess I would say if we suspended the collection of the, the 5.8 mil emergency levy, that, that would be justified under a clearly required standard because of your, because of your large cash carryover. And we wouldn't even have to get into this whole, like, you know, 30 minutes here on the, on the levies. But, but the part I'm having a problem with is the voters approved this money and it's not being used for that purpose. The purpose doesn't exist right now.
And I guess when they approved it, it needed to exist. And so that's, that is.
I don't want to get that, I don't want to get that.
I don't know that. That's, I mean, how do you predict that?
I mean, I don't think it existed in 16 and 19, but, but, but that's, we could debate that. I don't want to debate it though.
Yeah, I think when you look at fiber forecast, it, it does.
Well, again, when the budget commission looks at it, so they're just looking at year to year. I mean, we have to look at the, that, that's why I know you guys, the state makes you do these five-year forecasts. And maybe I was a little unfair and flippant to Sharden yesterday when I said, I don't really care about the five-year forecast. I mean.
I mean, it helps us because we have to prepare. I mean, it takes us almost two years to get the money. Once it's, I mean, you pass it, it takes you a half a year and then you get, you know? So it takes you a, a longer period of time to receive those dollars.
But just so you know, I mean, the, the law requires us, when, when the budget commissions look at this stuff, it just requires us to look at your budget for the next year. And do you need all of that money for the budget you've submitted? That's, that's the little silo that we're stuck in, right?
You have that voter approval that did happen in 2016 and 2019. But you have to do, part of the budget commission's job is to look at that for over a year. A totally different example I could give just as an analogy. If you have a police district township that's disbanded, that they eliminate their police district. They had a police levy on. They can no longer collect that money because the purpose doesn't exist anymore. Even though voters said at the time that it was renewed or added, that that was okay and that's what we wanted. If that need disappears for the entity over many years later, that it doesn't invalidate what happened the five years prior when it was approved. But when you're looking at it, that new set of circumstances, that's part of the budget commission's job.
That's my, that's what's been making me sick to my stomach. So I, I think there's an argument to be made that, you know, you're collecting on two emergency levies. There's no emergency. I think there's a, also an argument to be made that, you know? And I'm, I'm kind of forgetting about the cash carryover. I mean, I, it, it plays a, a big part in this, but I'm also looking at, okay, the reason you're at the floor is because of these, because all you have is emergencies on here. I mean, that's, that's the reason you're at this minimum funding floor that I don't think was really intended for districts. Top 10 districts that have $29 million in the bank doesn't strike me as the poster child for the minimum funding floor. So, you know.
And I'd say prior to that district, passing continuing levies was very difficult. So that was one of the ways that they came back to the taxpayers every five years or 10 years and said, you know, you can renew this levy at that time based on.
And I get it, your voters put you in this jackpot. I mean, they're, they're, they don't have clean hands here. I mean, when you look at, at the, at the levy history, they, they really don't. So I'm just telling you, I. I really don't. You know, I don't want to take $3.7 million away from a school, but I, that's kind of where I've landed. I, I think that we have to, I, I, I feel like I have to vote that way. I'm sorry.
That throws us into deficit spending.
It does, but the good news is then you can argue next year that you have an emergency and should collect both your levies. I mean, if it threw you into it, if, okay, but it's, it's going to throw you into a $1.7 million deficit for one year only and you have $29 million in the bank. That, that's, I'm not, that's tough for me, right? I mean, it's not, it's not like you're Kinston, like, oh, now we're going to throw you into deficit spending and you have $6 million in the bank. Well, that would be a problem. Chris raised, you know, to take a much bigger scalpel, it sounded like, but maybe I'm teasing too hard on you there. take a much bigger scalpel, it sounded like, but maybe I'm teasing, getting too hard on you there.
No, I'm, I'm there. I want to treat every entity the same. But West G is a phenomenal school.
Or the top school.
Karen is a phenomenal. You know, she could hire out and teach courses. She has to. But we need to be aware, these are taxpayers' monies, not the schools. And the, the wonderful idea that we're going to build the master plan, that's wonderful. Get a levy on the ballot and you can keep some of that money. Until then, the money's going back to the taxpayers.
But, but the building levy for the building would be, that's different than this money.
Yeah, which didn't use that.
It can be used.
Not for operations.
Not to pay salaries and all.
You just took $2 million and put it in PI.
Yeah.
So why did you take $4 million to put in PI? You've got these buildings that need renovations. Fix the HVAC in the high school.
Not all at one time.
And then the high. The money.
Then the high school is going to be torn down. So it's, it's fiscally responsible for us to take extra cash that we have, renovate the high school and then.
Even you're admitting it's extra cash. Give it to the taxpayers.
Use the column. And then we turn, tear down the building in two years after we put 2 million into it or 4 million into it.
Whatever is necessary to operate the school is on you. It's our responsibility to represent the taxpayers. And the taxpayers, I believe, have been hornswabbled with the word emergency. As soon as you say emergency, oh my God, we need to help the schools. It's not an emergency, you have 20.
We don't pick those, that language.
And I think that's not underestimating the intelligence of the electorate, too, to be honest.
And we don't pick that language. These are the types of levies that you're allowed to put on, continuing levy or emergency levy and that.
Well, I understand.
The taxpayers are picking, have the choice every five years or every 10 years to make that decision. It's not continuing where it just stays on your books. So that is one of the reasons, I mean, I think that's one of the reasons that they chose this back in that day to, to work with them, saying we have to go back to the taxpayers in five years and get approval.
I never realized it was incumbent on the budget commission to review, to annually review emergency levies. Chrissy, unfortunately, this is going to make a lot of work for you. Because we're going to have to do this for all of the emergency levies.
You should. Only West G has.
He's the only ones in the county.
They're the only ones in Ohio. About fire. Yeah. Do they, other municipal levies have emergency levies?
No, no, that's for emergency services. It's not, it's not emergency B.
Are there other emergency levies anywhere?
I don't believe our county.
Not in our county. I'm sure they exist on state, but I'm sure they do. But we didn't go there. The Secretary of State could probably tell you that.
Okay. It will make a difference in how we.
I, I understand, but I, I don't know. I, and you're, I think you've got to sit down with your board and figure out a way out of this. I mean, you've got these two 10-year levies that you're in the middle of and you can only use them for emergency purposes.
Well, one is coming due in '26, so that is certainly, the board has been discussing that levy. And that was from the 3.7 mil million dollar levy. That's the one we suspended the million dollar collection, the partial collection on.
So you're only collecting 2.7 million on that?
Four.
Okay, so I thought I was knocking you off 3.7.
No.
Has been mitigated.
Mitigated the million dollars. So for 25, we would get 3.7.
So you've got 5 and a half, 5.6 million dollars in windfall and you knocked off a dial, a million. So you're at 4.6.
For the collections for 20, we had to retroactive it back to 23, so that's a 24 collection. What this is, is for 25, we, we have to split those.
I understand that.
I, I would.
So 4.6 and we're taking, I'm proposing taking 2.6.
No, you're proposing 3.7.
3.7 because, well.
So it was 4.7?
No.
No, no, I'm giving you credit for your million.
That's, but that was for the 2023 collections in 2024.
It's split, I'm giving you, I'm giving you credit. Giving you credit for 500,000. Right?
I, I think this is a different year, tax year. So this is 24.
Well, no.
No.
This is suppressing starting in the year of your budget, submission of your budget, which is.
That's the collections now.
So just to summarize, the two levies.
Yes, for, I'm sorry, yes.
The 3.7 million dollar emergency levy is only producing 2.7 million because you've mitigated a million dollars. That's the one that Jim is talking about. The other emergency levy is producing $5 million and you're collecting about 2.35 million dollars. I would argue suppressing that one is less severe and drastic, but delivers the same message. And it ultimately saves you 500, 400, some thousand dollars. Maybe that's splitting the baby. I don't like any.
In addition to the mitigation of the million dollars.
So you're saying the two, the 3.5 mil emergency levy, you're saying suppress collection of that.
You know, I, I just, I just feel punishing or doing, or operating a school where expenses are less than revenue and achievement results, which are phenomenal, and then mitigating something that no other district, I believe in the state of Ohio did. I, I think I will fall to the least severe and still legally compliant mechanism. So if we forget the mitigation component, you know, I would like to suppress the 2.3 inclusive of all mitigation. It's two, that's 2.3 million dollars of, of relief for taxpayers. And it gives the school an opportunity to, I mean, this is not the people sitting in this room's problem in its entirety. I mean, only, I don't know if anybody was here when this was put on the ballot and.
Well, if somebody was here in 2019, I, I have an issue. I do. Because I don't think there was an emergency in 2000.
But, but to that point, Jim, I will say this budget commission also had a duty and responsibility, right?
No, I, I never would have looked at this if it wasn't for.
I agree.
I, I, it was not on my radar.
We've got decades of budget commissions who, and, and throughout the state, who just don't do their jobs. So we all, we all have a stake in this and I don't want the total club to come down on a party that's being, that's been cooperative, that's been, they haven't been adversarial. They haven't been, we've not been beat up. We, this has been the most civil dialogue I can imagine under the situation of the subject. And to that end, I think that's deserving of something.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. I agree. They, yeah.
But I also understand we have a shell order. It's a shell, right? My argument is since no one can actually articulate what an emergency is when you declare an emergency, I would believe if you are in deficit spending, you are an emergency. So that's about $2 million. As soon as we hit the $2 million mark, you're deficit spending according to this budget. So if you pick anything greater than 2 million, you're, you're giving credence to the emergency existing. I mean, it's not perfect logic, but it's my logic right now.
No, that's a fair point.
So my argument is anything more severe than $2 million and I have a problem with because you put the school in an emergency scenario. Now, forget the, we are forgetting for a moment in time, the cash balance. But it, it also is showing that the cash balance is hooking. We do know that as a percent of expense. Is it hooking fast? We can argue all those points, but we do know that anomaly. You can't punish somebody for past sins. You have to look at today only. So my argument would be, we calculated, Karen, check my numbers, because, you know, I believe I show a delta of just barely north of 2 million. I would just say 2 million is what your budget revenue shows exceeds expenditure, taking into account both of those ones.
Right.
Anything more than that, my understanding is someone could put a new emergency levy on, let it emergency, whether it's passive or not, because they're deficit.
If they put that as the purpose.
I, I agree, but that is also a case of an emergency condition. I don't see how you can exclude it from the former, even though it's specified in the latter.
Be an argument that's.
I know, I do.
I did not research that term and how they interpret it.
Yeah, I understand that there's some goo around that word emergency. What does that mean exactly? What is the situation? And how do they go back and figure that out decades or so later? I mean.
So your proposal is to suspend collection for one year of the 3.5 mil.
I would suspend, I would propose to spend, suspend collection of $2 million against one of the emergency levies. And that then puts them at a zero sum game. There's no change to their cash balance based on their budget submission. It's, it's, for lack of a better word, revenue neutral.
I, my, I would say I would say that we would be, I think legally, the budget commission would be justified in suspending either one of the emergency levies, just based upon your cash carryover. I think if, forget the emergency conversation, just based on your cash carryover and your revenue exceeding budgets, budgeted expenses, I believe on that basis alone, the budget commission is legally required to suspend one of the emergency levies.
How many school districts are there in the state of Ohio?
610.
600 school districts and one mitigated.
I'm giving them credit for that. I, I, yeah, I, I mean, I, I, I feel I'm giving them credit for that because it, it would, it would be more. I would tell you that based upon my reading of the law, you're, it's, you're not in an emergency, that's what the voters approve the funds for. And I, I think we would be justified in suspending collection of both emergency levies.
But if you suspend both, you put them in emergency. Arguing, forgetting cash carryover because that's an argument.
You can't, but if you're assessing an emergency, you have to look at the cash carryover.
But to go on for an emergency levy, I think it does.
You could go on, you could go on for a different one. I would argue that if you took away both your emergency levies and then you, you could go on, you could put an emergency levy on for reason number two, that your expenditures are exceeding your revenues. But that's not what you're collecting an emergency for. You, you guys picked the other one. And how are, how are you in an emergency if you still have at that point, $26 million? I, I don't know that you could justify an emergency even then, we wiped both of them off. So I'm not, I'm not proposing we do that. I think it would be punitive. But.
Think I'm on it.
I'm not trying to be punitive.
I think we're, we've tried to work with the budget commission.
You guys are the best ones.
I mean, we.
I totally agree.
Needed the million dollars. I don't think that was, you know, that was a hard lift for our district. That was, that was not, that was difficult for this district with the political pressure from this county and outside this county. So it's not just, you know, there's 610 treasurer's calling, there's 610.
We, we share that pressure with.
And so.
You, you didn't send lawyers in after us. You didn't send proxies to attack us like the others, some of the others did. Okay. That, that's why, that's why my, that's why I'm physically ill about this because you, but I got to look at the law. I, I, the law mandates this. I, it's not like a judgment call. I mean, Chuck's trying to, to, to make up justifications to offense to, to, to do less. And, and I'm, I'm going to buy into a couple of those, but it's, it's not because you did a bad job. It's not because you have worked well with us. It's not, it's, and you mitigated, you're the only ones that mitigated the, the increase. You mitigated 20% of your increase, but you did mitigate.
But they, they mitigated nearly 100% of what they believed at the moment in time. They didn't know what the floor adjustment would be. You have, you have to put.
I understand that.
We can't have revisionist.
I understand that, but I, well, listen, your board, if, if, your board can either accept this or they can, they can take us to court. So you, you'll have a decid, you know, your board can decide what they want to do. They, they'll get a bite at that apple. So I, I am for, I am, Chuck has talked me down a little bit. I, I am for suspending the 3.5 mil emergency levy in its entirety. That's, that is suppressing collection of that levy for one year. That is where I'm at.
That 3.5, which is the 3.7 million or?
No, that's the.
Or you're looking at.
The 3.5 mil emergency is 2 million, yeah, 2,350,000 dollars. Oh, I was going to do the other one. Chuck has talked me into.
Say that again, you're suppressing the 2010?
The 2010, 3 point, are we really calling it the 2010 at this point? What, what are we real, which should we call it?
I'm looking at schedule B, the schedule B.
Yeah, it is on the schedule B, it's the 2010.
3.6.
That one, it was first.
That's what it's.
What color is that one, Chrissy?
I believe you guys are talking about the blue that.
The blue?
Renewed in 2009, effective.
2010. So really the schedule B should sit, should call it a 2005.
If you're going.
It's renewed though.
From the inception.
Yeah.
So it should be noted then that if that's, if that's true, if we're going to suppress 2.35, 2.3 million dollars, West G has mitigated 3.3 million dollars.
Because we mitigated on the 3.7 million dollars.
Yes, well, they're mitigating 500,000 for this budget that we're on, right?
Is that right? Yes, because, because the collections, they're on split collections for years.
Right. But it's, it has to go to the next year too, so that cash is gone.
But Chuck, they got 4.6 million dollar floor adjustment. I mean, look at Sanborn. I mean, that's, I mean, Sanborn, you know, taxpayers could sue us for not doing this. Not that I'm encouraging that. But I, you know, I mean, look what happened in Sanborn. I mean, that, that was less money, less cash carryover, less of, way less of an increase.
Where does it put your percent cash, cash to expense?
So at 98% collection, that is 2 million, 2.3 million. And you're.
We don't collect that 81.
What do you collect, over?
No, it's less, Newbury's collections have been.
No, it was our collection last year, Chris, was over 100%.
Yeah, it's about 102 for the whole county.
I understand, but.
They're saying, they're saying Newbury's.
We don't track my school district.
Yeah. Newbury's been down.
Okay, so 95% collection, that's 2.2 million, 228,000, 95%.
So it would mitigate the other million.
Well, I'm saying your revenue, even factoring in the million, your revenue exceeds budget expenditures by 2,810,000. So it would put you in a.
Mitigate the million plus this.
It would put you in $150,000 deficit spent according to your budget with a $29 million cash carryover. Am I, am I wrong on that?
Does estimated revenue reflect interest?
It's, it's in there.
Yeah, she put it in her budget.
It's other revenue, considered other revenue.
Because it's, it's interesting in, in looking at the 24, 25 information, you've got estimated revenue of $33 million, estimated expense of $31 million. So the cash balance actually grows by over $2 million.
You gotta add the 5.5 million dollars of expenses out of the emergency fund.
And income.
There, there's no income. It's a wash. Income expense.
It does, it's the 2 billion dollars.
There's no, and there's no cash balance. Well, we're virtually, you have 700.
So you're asking, so like, you're asking the board to mitigate the million dollars plus the 2.35?
No, I.
Just the 2.
No, I'm saying that I believe that I am required by law to at least suspend collection of one of the emergency levies.
Well, the problem is they already mitigated the other one.
I understand that.
By one mil. So.
I think there's a very strong argument to be made that we're required by law to suspend both emergency levies because there's no emergency. But I think I could squint and follow your line of reasoning that if you eliminate the 3.5 mil emergency levy.
Put them in deficit spend.
Barely, but you do, at least you, they barely go into deficit spend.
So according to your submission, what he's saying, your submission shows a revenue over expenditure of 2 million.
Yeah.
They're suppressing all of that and plus 100,000, almost 200,000.
So, well, 95%.
95%.
228,000 minus 81,000.
Bring in 2.2 million, I estimated.
Plus the 1 million that we already did.
Well, that's factored into your budget.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
That's a chance.
Yeah.
Half a night, half a millions in there. Well, a half a million in there because it's, we split it between years. So. Job well done.
I'm sorry.
It would be 72%. With estimated revenue of 40.8 million dollars.
So we would put them in a deficit spend of 146,813.
That's based on.
It's based on her budget and.
Yes, but not in the past eight years has the estimated has the actual expense actually been more than estimated expense.
But that's what she submitted. I'm gonna take it for face value.
I understand.
I I I get that.
The data indicates actual expense will be under 31 million dollars.
But you said that they have all these projects. So how much?
We've already transferred 2 million dollars.
Okay, so that's.
And the board is authorized in transfer and the transfer has been made.
So Karen, if you hadn't had had the opportunity to transfer that 2 million dollars, your carryover, your estimated actual. Ending balance would have been over 30 million bucks.
I don't do the revaluation, sir.
Okay. Well, again, it's not their fault. I mean.
I mean, I.
It is the board's fault that you're at the floor because you used emergency levies.
Back in 2005.
That's what I'm saying.
I mean, that's the thing. It's like these were.
But they were renewed in 16 and 19. So.
Not knowing the 20, not knowing in 2018 or 16 and 19, that you're gonna have a 20 mil floor still. We were. We were above the 20 mil floor when those were renewed.
And we didn't know we'd have Newbury or that the revaluation would.
So those are all factors that have. You know, it takes, as you know. These budgets don't turn on a dime.
It it took this revale to bring to the Budget Commission's attention. Our responsibilities as to reviewing emergency levies. We never have. I've been doing this a long time. We've never had this conversation.
It is a type of levy to to be used and by schools and schools throughout the Ohio, how you use these types of emergency levies. And I. I don't know that any emergency levies are. Reduced.
I mean, there's a downside.
I find that I would. I mean, in your research, have you found that the Budget Commission has reduced emergency levies?
Uh, yes.
Where? What that thing?
Um, Middletown.
Is that a school district?
Yeah. Only school districts can do these types of levies.
I understand. I'm just asking.
So that's that's just.
Usual to.
And I only have the benefit of things that resolve in litigation.
So Middletown is.
So it could be happening elsewhere. We might not know because it's not showing up in legal research, at least.
So Jim, why?
So we would not. So do we still have to mitigate the million dollars?
That ship sailed.
It's already set up. The tax bills have already been set up because we mitigated it last year.
But I'm using your mitigation numbers.
I'm just asking.
So so if if.
We're gonna go.
If one of these other two gentlemen agree with my position, I I Chuck's less than me and sounds like Chris might be more than me. So I I don't know. We still haven't made any decisions. We've got to talk it out. I don't know. I'm just saying that under. Under my proposed solution, which is different than than what I came in at. Thinking, looking at Chuck's line of reasoning with putting you into putting you into an operating deficit. And then saying that the emergency is still there and kind of closing one of my eyes when I'm looking at your cash carryover. You know, that puts you in $180,000 using your numbers with already taking into account the mitigation. That puts you in $181,000 deficit for this budget against a $29 million cash carryover. I I I'm sure I'll be vilified, but should I be? I mean, 181,000 deficit to a $29 million cash carryover. If if that's standing on its alone, I think the commission would be obligated by law to to look at reducing revenues. Just that scenario on its own. That's kind of where I'm at. So.
If you're bleeding into the next tax year, I mean, that's the problem is.
I know. I need to put you guys on camera here.
You believe into our next fiscal year, which that will put us at a deficit spending that next fiscal year.
Maybe. I don't know.
It does.
While the board, that's the board's decision. Are they gonna use? They can have another $2 million transfer to PI? It won't if they don't do that.
Uh, no, even so, if we would. That would put us in a deficit spending.
Well, that'll help your argument that you have an emergency and should keep. Because here's the thing, we gotta look at these next year. That's why I'm strongly encouraging your board to look at your levy structures. And I get the voters to read this, which is gonna be a huge.
That fits us. I mean, we're trying to extend this for our levy, for our voters.
I understand.
Shrinks that time period.
But unfortunately, the facts tell us that you have. You're taking in $2 million more this tax year and putting it into savings. You're not gonna spend it. There's this wonderful idea of we're gonna. We got the master plan, but architects have not been hired for the project. There's no levy on the ballot. Has proposed language been considered?
I guess that's, I mean, you know, when we, the board just voted on it in January 34th, so it's, I mean, a month old.
You also wouldn't hire an architect to design a building if you've not passed a bond issue to construct one.
Yeah, you can't.
You can hire them to do a master plan, and we've done that.
This ethereal renovation has been out there for a long, long time. The time has come where you stop hoarding money and give some back to the taxpayer. That you gave back a million bucks is huge. That you're the only school district that was so responsible is embarrassing to the other 600 school districts. My concern is we are treating you completely differently than all the other entities here in the county, and that's wrong. So Jim, I want to know why if. If neither levy. Is meeting the emergency requirement, why do we not take both off?
I think we would be justified legally in doing so. I think that Chuck raises a point. That if you take the one off, you push them into a deficit. And. You can at least say, hey, we've pushed them into deficit spending. So so they can collect the other as an emergency because they may be in a really big deficit. So we're creating. I don't know if we're creating an emergency, but we're at least creating a deficit spending environment by suspending collection of one of them.
But it's not real deficit spending. They have $29 million in the bank.
But year to year, it is deficit spending.
I'm trying not to be punitive either.
I mean.
That's a lot of money.
All the two school districts in the county are deficit spending. Three, three out of the five are deficit spending. That doesn't mean they're all in emergency. They're burning away their cash reserves. I think the issue here is. I guess I'd like to use a match rather than a blowtorch to burn cash. So if we use a blowtorch, we could burn more than we thought we were gonna burn. And we do it really quickly and we don't give them time to adapt because this is. I mean, $2 million is 10 is roughly 10%. 2.7 million dollars, 10% of their cash carryover. That's one year. You could have another issue that you draw that down unintentionally. So we could see a huge change in these numbers. You're already predicting almost a 10% reduction of your cash as a percent of expense. We're driving in another 10%, which I just don't want to create a problem by fixing a problem. That's that's mine. I I totally appreciate the requirements that we have as a show, and I totally get this. The emergency, the context of emergency. I just want to squint as much as we can and say, when we put them in a deficit spending, we put them in emergency. However, we can look at that and and sleep at night. I'm okay with. I just don't want to actually make it so that it's so punitive. Never get cooperation again. That's what I'm.
And I think we've done this before. I mean, we've. We've throttled back collections. We've we've reduced people's revenue. Less the first year. Then then probably because we wanted to see what would happen. So I don't. I don't know that that would be wholly inconsistent with what we've done with other entities.
Okay, so do you have a motion?
Excuse me. Did you want me to at least read the.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have none. Yeah. Thanks, Derek.
The actual numbers.
We're. This is it. It's up.
The actual budget. So you're not going to.
It's the modified. This is the one certified version.
So you're not like you're not gonna certify.
We don't know.
Yeah, we haven't voted yet.
Yeah, let's go through the footprint first quickly and.
West G local school district submitted their 2024, 2025 tax budget with the beginning cash balance in their general fund of 27,114,659. They requested revenue in the amount of 33,141,393.
130, 130. Oh, I'm sorry. No, she's requesting. I'm sorry.
And and the Budget Commission will consider 33,138,723. Expenses presented at 31,57,797, leaving an ending cash balance of 29,195,585. The emergency levy revenue request, you know, beginning cash balance, but the request was at 5,549,654.
449. 5 million or.
For consideration is 5,453,59. And the expenses are at 5,449,654, leaving an ending cash balance of 705. From an improvement fund has been in cash balance of 1,384,526. They requested revenue in the amount of 2,216,133. The revenue under consideration would be 2,216,306, with expenditures at 3,500,000, leaving an ending cash balance of 100,882. Total mileage per tax year, 24, 25, 3.5 inside general, 1 mil inside public improvement, 3.8 outside general, 4.07. Emergency with total mileage at 47.37. They also received manufactured home. Their net revenue last year was 30,881,266.
I think we should run this. So they have one mil, inside mil with permanent improvement.
Yes.
Which is keeping them at the floor.
Well, it's not. The one mil is not counted in the floor calculation.
Would they still be at? Would you still be at the floor if we shifted that, too? So you're that far below the floor?
Or at 16, I think, probably. I think we're at 16.5, something like that.
And she the number from the state after the revale came in at 15.96.
15.9. So even with the emergency levies, we would be under. That's we would be under the 20 mil floor with the emergency.
Okay.
Yeah, you had.
So. You added emergency levies and it would be under the 20 mil floor as well. So we're.
So now.
You collect less than 20.
So we're shifting. So shifting wouldn't.
No. Be at 16.5.
Yeah, because if you were at 19 and a half, we could shift it and impact the floor. I would say that it's another avenue we can look at, but that is no impact.
So if these emergencies were operating.
They would be under.
Moving money to the PI. The only thing this board could do, if it was excess cash balance, is reduce the PI levy. Because any other reduction would just be corrected for in the 20 floor just then.
Correct.
So we could only reduce. 2.2 million.
Yes.
Max.
Yes.
Without affecting the floor.
Without affecting the floor. That's where 15.5 now. You had the one that gets 15.5.
15.9.
15.9.
Yeah, so theoretically, if we were to reduce.
Three.
Anything other than the non-counted number, it's gonna get.
Yeah, I don't just read it.
It just poof, end of the year. It's like, it's a wasted effort. So I mean, I think the amount that we're reducing. If the world were different and there weren't emergency levies that were operating, the floor would automatically compensate for anything this board tried to adjust, except if we were to reduce a PI levy. And that PI, the maximum amount that we could, this board could reduce at that point is 2.2 million dollars from the PI levy.
Are you referring to a true PI levy or a PI funds that are shifted?
From the inside.
PI levy.
Do they even? They are. Are they collecting a PI levy right now?
No.
Oh, yeah, no.
We have a one mil inside.
It's just inside mil.
Yeah, it's that's inside mil shift.
Oh, that's right.
So that's the shift. I mean, if we.
So the argument that would come to him. It would be a Sanborn argument.
That's what happened in San.
Sanborn, I mean, we say that you're shifting it to PI.
But we'd still be under the 20 mil floor.
In Sanborn, they shifted to hit the floor.
They hit them.
Or we're. I know. To my point is.
We're still.
Nothing we could do.
No, you would still.
Right. There would be nothing this board could do.
Right.
I mean, so I mean, that's, I think, if Chris were here, that's the consideration that I I mean. If this were done in a perfect world where these were operating levies. You'd be handcuffed to to change this scenario without the state automatically returning the floor.
I just can't get around the voters approved the emergency.
I I understand. I'm just, I'm asking for tempers, not necessarily.
I I again, while I think we're justified in the cash carryover, I don't know. It's the purpose thing that's got me really hung up here.
But. You know, but we would be back at the 20 mil floor. I mean, so I mean, I think there is some. Wisdom in that. We pleaded our case from that standpoint. There is wisdom.
Okay, so what do you want?
Well, I don't like not being in compliance with the law because we're all sworn to uphold the law. And you've indicated both emergency levies need to be. Taken away.
Well, there's an argument.
Okay. That's $6 million based on the estimated ending cash balance of 29 million dollars, which I believe will be in excess of 30 million dollars in reality. They could go for five years. Without these levies and still be home.
I understand your point. I I guess, taking part of Chuck's logic, if we if we. Suspend collection of the 3.5 mil emergency levy. That'll push them into, according to their numbers, I get that that they've been off in the past, but according to their budget, that would put them into a 180,000 deficit spend next year against a cash carryover of 29 million. And I I think that that would be sufficient. And you just wanted to comment about what you said. I mean. For a lot of reasons. I understand. I understand.
What's the.
Listen. See, you shouldn't punish good behavior. You you have good behavior. I I just don't see this as a punishment. I see it as something we have to. We have to follow the law. And and the way the the levy purpose language is, we would not be following the law if we didn't take some action here.
Who could file suit?
Any any taxpayer. That's what happened in Sanborn. So. And I think that we would. While anybody could still file a lawsuit, I think we would.
Logically, because we would argue they are in deficit spending.
We would mitigate. Yes, we would. We would mitigate their exposure to a taxpayer lawsuit, I think. So. Who is it? I'm. Yeah, I made the motion. We suspend. Make the motion. We approve the budget with the suspension of the. 3.5 mil emergency levy. So we will have to adjust the revenue number. What are we approving at 98%? Yes. Is that what's on the sheet? What you say what we're approving?
Yes.
So we were suspending 2 million, 2,298,815 of our of our certified revenue.
Yes.
Not their submitted revenue.
So the approved by the Budget Commission as revenue certification. Would be 33,138,723 minus. 2,298,815. That's a 98% collection, which you say you don't get. So but.
I'm diverse. Yeah.
But we're certified. But these are just, we gotta compare apple to apple. So it's it's. Really reducing your revenue, probably, you think 2.2 million-ish, but for purposes of our certification at 98% collection. It's 2,298,815. So. And then we would have to make the corresponding adjustments to their budget, but I would make a motion that we approve the budget with that. With that modification. Is that right, Chris?
That'll throw us into deficit spending.
About 180,000 is what I I add.
31. Oh, 57.
I think it's quite laughable. We are calling it deficit spending when you have, you will have $30 million in the bank.
You know, it's, it's what's on, it's what we refer to as deficit spending for the, for the year.
But deficit spending is just like having these emergency levies. Oh my God, it's an emergency. Oh my God, we're in deficit. Wait a minute, we got 30 million bucks.
Emergency levies were a mechanism to pass taxes. It's one of the, you know,
Yeah.
One of the options of passing the tax. And at the time, I just have each time and I know all they were.
We have to look at it here to here. That's I know, but I, I would, I would strongly encourage you to talk to your board and look at restructuring these levies. Because
Getting those levies, as you know, from our level, his passage history, it's difficult.
I know.
And so you're putting us in a position where we would not be able to pass levies. I mean, they're just difficult.
I understand.
I mean, they would be a substitute levy. I mean, that's what you would
You know, I, I would hope that the voters in the West G district appreciate that voluntarily mitigated a million dollars. And they consider that when you put a levy on to replace the emergency levy. And, you know, I think you know, it's not meant to make you feel better because I don't think I can say anything to make you feel better. But
And we'd still be under the and then 20 mil floor. I mean, that's, I mean, the 20 mil floor has to be met so that we have state funding. It's required for us to be the 20 mil floor to for us to be eligible for state funding. Otherwise, we don't get the state funding and that would be another five to six million dollars that we would, you know.
I understand, but I don't want to sound like Chris, you have 29 million. I mean,
Okay.
It's
That's not your money. It's the taxpayers' money.
I'm not, and we've been very, very cautious with our money. So
I, I think you have been very cautious with your money. I would 100% agree with that.
Aaron, you're one of the best in the business.
Hard. This is hard. This is difficult.
Yeah.
And I think this is difficult to go in and it affects a lot of the operation that we're, we're looking at. So it's
Frankly, I'm embarrassed. We didn't know that we had this responsibility about evaluating emergency status. I never knew. Okay, we have a motion before us. Is there a second?
Either you want to do more and you want to do less. So we're going to standoff? What are we going to do?
Your motion
None of us agree with each other. So you have that going for that. Yes.
Yes.
That's
Motion can die on a date?
Well, the problem is his motions, his motions more.
My motion would got
Yeah, I, I don't look
And, and frankly, that Jim has brought to our attention that these emergency levies needed to be evaluated. And compared to your cash balance, I think both need to go and that's $6 million. That would have been my motion. I have not made that motion for a host of reasons. But at the same time, I want to honor that the school has been willing to recognize they did not deserve all of the taxpayers' money and gave back a million bucks. That is a big deal. I will second Mr. Flay's motion.
Let's get public comment first.
Everyone went and got lunch?
Yeah.
You'll listen to us.
Anybody in the audience, you'll need to state your name, your address for the record.
Good.
Sir. Dave Lehrer, 15593 Auburn Road, Newbury, Ohio. I simply wanted to express the board. I'm very impressed with the care that you've put into these deliberations. Very impressive.
Yeah, I don't feel good about this one. So I, I really don't. I, I don't know. I, I'm, I, I individually, I think you, you are always welcome to call and talk to me. If, if there are some strategies we could pursue, I don't know if we could, if we could go to, you know, you could maybe go to the voters and say, hey, we're collecting on these emergencies for 10 years and it's this amount of money. Let's, let's, let's change this to an operating levy for a tiny bit less money and, and do as tax savings or I don't know. I mean, I, I would be happy to, to individually work with you and, and come up with some ideas that you could try to get out of. You're, you're in a, you're in a trap here that was set a long time ago that none of you are responsible for. And, and you're, you're having to deal with the consequences of that. So it's unfortunate. And I do feel like, again, it's not a punishment. It's us following the law, but I, I feel like because you've been good stewards of, of the funds and you've made a lot of really decisions that have really turned out well, that, but you're suffering consequences for that. And I don't like that. That's what I don't like. So, but, okay.
Call the question.
Call the question.
I'm going to abstain because I'm the one who reached out to Dr. Beers. I believe that that resulted in West G's mission of mitigation, which I respect. And I would prefer a lower reduction, although I appreciative of the requirements we have by law. But I feel I am too close to the emotion of West G's plight based on my request and your for doing it. And I want to support that.
Thank you.
That's fair. I vote yes.
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you. You still snuck in a couple of, of more work.
For all us.
No, no, we have to
Hi, Adrian. We've got to renew the papers.
Well, I'll send them over to you. We have to have a meeting before March 1st, December? No, we approved it.
You approved it this time.
Right. So we'll just
We'll fix it. We'll bring it. I think we need to sign.
In the whole relative of this. It needs to get taken care of.
Always.
It gets understanding of your concerns.
Thanks.
Aaron, how long you been doing this?
Oh, my gosh.
35. We almost restructured.
I remember some years being that far.
Yeah.
We have to And again, you want to go for a renewal as opposed to, you know, I get it. So I get or new money, a new one. Sir, understand your concerns. I'm here for the taxpayers. Well, we're here for the taxpayers too.
Because you want to stay on the
Different approach. Different approach. Yeah. Tomato, tomato. Yeah.
And I know that's
My message You're going to work on that.
Yeah, I have to continue and
Yes.
So we have to cancel the one first. So to answer your question, so he's saying, can you pass a levy that say that the other one will be canceled? So you could do a replacement. We've had entities that have said, hey, voters, if you pass this, then we'll get rid of this other levy.
Right.
They don't have to, but they have done it. But we've kind of held up with that.
We already did it.
Clarin did it. Yeah, Clarin did it.
Give it to replace.
Yeah, part district that asked and let them
But they've got something going on. We're going to, there's a bill to get rid of replacement.
There is, but I don't know that it's going to go.
Okay, there's a
By, you know, auditors are opposing that bill because it's used everywhere.
Yeah.
And we think you should just clarify the ballot language. Don't, don't change, don't make it go away. Just make it clear on the ballot.
And I'm not sure that with a replacement, you can jump statutes. Usually you're doing, it's the same
Same language.
Oh, so you don't think they can replace it?
I think you can do a substitute.
Yeah.
Yeah, we take it from our, to see if it's
Is this hearing still going?
It is still
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Sorry. I mean, we still have more business. So
I, I understand.
But we're allowed to chat if you can. So it's not like we're doing it secret. Everybody is listening.
So you guys know, tri-County spelling is now history. I missed it to be here with you folks. How did you guys do?
We won.
Oh. My little guy won.
Nice.
Okay.
First orders and in township.
Yes. Amendment number one, their new general fund total is $1,051,603.36. Special revenue, $3,138,506.32. Capital projects, $318,082.1. Total certificate, $4,508,191.69. Net change overall is $1,414,628.98 and temporary appropriations, $2.00.
So move. Second, yes.
Yeah.
Clarin Township, amendment number one, their new general fund total is $951,140.59. Special revenue, $1,585,706.27. Total certificate, $2,536,936.86. Net change over original, $210,393.86 and appropriations, $2.00.
So move.
Second?
Yes.
I know Adrian made the long trip over here. So stretch this one out a little.
Adrian, did you
I'm still online too.
Did you listen to the conversation at yesterday's school budget hearings?
Uh, I didn't catch everything I was on. I, I caught most of it.
There, there was a person who admired this building such that she called it the Taj Mahal.
Oh, okay.
But she liked us for building. Go ahead.
Okay, so we have
I think the Taj Mahal has lightning rods though.
Okay, we have Georgia County amendment number three. We have three revenue decertifications for common league, which nets to $117,240. Our new special revenue fund total is $123,411,245.24. Total certificate, $235,235,677,253.34.
So move.
Second.
Anything you want to add or?
No, this is just the consolidation of the community traction funds.
Oh, yes.
I vote yes also.
Okay.
Yes. You can vote yes?
Yes. I'm not voting yes. Thank you, Adrian.
Would the budget commission be comfortable with canceling the meeting for Monday?
Yeah. I move we cancel Monday's
Wouldn't we be comfortable? I'm sorry. Did I overreact?
I move we, I move we cancel the regularly scheduled budget commission meeting for Monday, March 4th.
I will second.
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a Monday, is there a meeting today at 1?
Yes. B O R provision.
Oh, B O R.
Not me. Have fun with that.
Just to bring the budget commission up to speed, we still do have, we have three parks that haven't turned in their year end and five political subdivisions and then East Georgia.
They have till the end of this month, correct?
Yeah.
The end of February or the end of March?
Sixty days.
February.
February, if they're on UAN.
60 days, but we have an extra day.
I'm sorry. Three parks, five political subdivisions. What was the last name? East Georgia Fire District. Special East It's a big special.
Okay, we're, we're adjourned, right?
Are, is there anything else?
Is there anything I want? Public comment.
Oh, there. Yeah, any public comment?
No, I'm just hoping that I'm going to get a boatload of emails, emails from you all that like slides.
I sent the final version of the slides over this morning. They can provide those to you anytime this afternoon.
Do you want mine?
Do you want PDF, right?
Anyway, but I, I, I mostly got yours. And if you can give it to me, that would be great. Can I get a copy of that document that you and Chrissy were referring to or no?
What is that?
Oh, oh.
Sure. You can have my, you can have the handout I gave the school.
Okay.
You have Chrissy's.
Yeah, that's Yeah.
Do you want to just save my PowerPoint on your computer?
Yeah, that'll work.
So
Okay.
We haven't yet. Any other public comment?
Hi.
Yes.
Oh. Is there anybody online? We, we lost our
Any, anybody typing anything?
No.
Left a room, left a room, left a room. No. Okay. With that, I'm going to, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Hey, there's just one thing.
I'll second.
Yeah.
Reading is adjourned.